Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Brookline School Committee on September 10th. We have, as always, a full schedule, including public comment. And let's see, is, there's Claire. Hi Claire. So let's first introduce Claire Galian. So if you unmute yourself, Claire, you can, Claire is our student representative to the school committee. So this is her first meeting. She's not even in school yet, so thank you for starting even before your school year starts. So Claire, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself, what you do at the high school, maybe where you went to elementary school, just, you know, a few things, let us know.
Sure. Is this, should I wait till I give my report later? Or is this just like?
Oh no, I think this is your report. This is it.
Okay, great.
This is it.
Hi, I'm Claire Galian. I'm the new student rep. I'm a junior at Brookline High School. And yeah, I'll just share a little bit about myself. I went to Driscoll for K through eight. Yay! Yeah, and now I'm in, I'm school, the new school, SWS, which I really love. And yeah, so some of my passions are art, English, studying Japanese, and psychology. One day I'd love to be a clinical psychologist, or a teacher, or a public servant of some sort. Um, I'm, yeah. I'm really involved in student government. This is gonna be my third year in legislature, which is exciting. And I do band and music collective, and I play the flute. And I like to tutor English and Japanese. So that's kind of like everything about me, I guess. Okay, so now to my actual report. Over the past couple of days, I've been racking my brain to think of what I was gonna say. School doesn't start for another six days, so I found myself feeling kind of puzzled. Then I realized, as a student, I have one very helpful resource: social media. I know that may sound a little silly, but yesterday I created some Instagram polls to get an idea of how students are feeling about this upcoming school year, and it was very telling. I got answers from folks of all different ages, varying from seventh to 12th grade. So my first poll was, "Do you have a positive outlook on this upcoming school year?" So 71% of people said no, they don't have a positive outlook. And 29% said yes, they do. So these results made me feel pretty sad. But I wanted to understand why people felt so negatively about the new school year. Was it just end of summer blues or something greater? My second poll was, "Do you find remote learning more or less stressful than in-person?" 63% said more stressful, and 37% said less stressful. So I asked people who voted to please elaborate on why they picked what they did, and here's what they said. To start positively with less stressful. A lot of people brought up that expectations were lower, and there was generally less homework, which I don't know how all that applies to this year, but that's at least how it was in the spring. Some students mentioned that being in a loud classroom, or having to talk to a lot of people in person, can be anxiety inducing. One consistent thing I've heard was that students liked to have, liked having the freedom to create their own schedules and manage their work the way they wanted. Okay, so let's move on to the more negative side, which was the people who said that it was more stressful. So an overwhelming amount of students talked about how remote learning was detrimental to their mental health. Whether it was the lack of structure, not being able to be friends, not able to see friends, being trapped in a loud house, taking care of a family member, et cetera. Many felt that their teachers and administrators lacked compassion for the difficulty of work, and many are just feeling the stress of uncertainty of the oncoming year. Most students mentioned that holding themselves accountable to do work was worrying them. For many students that struggle with intellectual disabilities, having to completely manage their work can be taxing and stressful. So it's clear that there are definitely contradictions between the two sides. What I hope that we can all see from what the students have said is that mental health is a really crucial aspect to be paying attention to this school year. And hopefully going forward, we'll remember that 63% of students in every situation we make, or decision we make. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's great. You started off with a poll. Wow. So we actually are gonna be talking about BHS a little later in our meeting today. So feel free to just jump in, raise your hand when you want to add something, or, you know, say, "That doesn't feel right," or "I would like to, like you to think about this," or however way you want to contribute. That would be great. So also, again, you don't have to stay for the whole evening. Sometimes we are a little late, and you may have on other nights homework, or just be bored, and that's okay too. So just know that. Jim?
Great. I just want to say, welcome Claire. I had the opportunity earlier today to meet with Claire and with Anthony as just a quick little intro, and to say how fortunate I think the school committee is, and the community, to have such a young lady who's gonna be joining the school committee and have such poise to be speaking in front of the whole community, and to carry the spirit, the wisdom, the emotion, the feeling of high school students, and probably others as well, for all of us to hear from the authentic voice. So welcome Claire. I enjoyed that conversation today. And I think it takes a lot of courage, presence, and confidence to be able to represent the student body in this forum, and we're very happy to have you here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going right into the superintendent's report, including introduction of new staff. Jim, you are on.
Okay, that is terrific. A number of people are not going to be able to be present for a number of reasons tonight. As, as you know, this is an exceedingly busy time. And so I'll let you know, for people who are not here, for example, Donna Finnegan is right now running Zoom meetings for her incoming kindergarten classes. So that's what's taking her, and she's thoroughly involved with that. But let's, let's go through the introductions. I have a short little statement to say about each one of them. Michelle Bartley. And there you go, Michelle. Welcome, Michelle. Michelle comes to Brookline as an experienced school leader, who most recently was the principal of the Foxborough Regional Charter Middle School, serving student population of approximately 600 students. She has a collaborative leadership style, builds positive relationships with teachers and students, and families, has worked as principal. Her record as principal has encompassed the implementation of school curriculum, instruction, assessment, oversight of intervention projects, initiatives to address achievement gaps, development and organizational school-wide events, traditions that create the spirit of the school. She's done it all. Prior to her work as a principal, Ms. Bartley was the dean of students. And let's see, she was the dean of students and family in Foxborough Regional Charter School. And she is an assistant principal with the Dighton-Rehoboth District for three years. She has a strong middle school background, has taught sixth and seventh grade science for nine years in Holliston and Lexington, comes from a gate background. And we are so pleased to have you here, Michelle, especially during this interesting time. So welcome to the Brookline Public Schools.
Thank you so much. It's great to be here.
Okay, Elizabeth Castellano, who may not be here. Is Elizabeth here? Oh Elizabeth, there you are. Very good. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Elizabeth has spent the last nine years as a school administrator in the Cambridge and Chelsea Public Schools. Her leadership work in those districts included creating, and leading and implementing, social emotional learning, team and student support teams, participating in instructional leadership teams, and oversight of building safety, social justice initiatives, and school climate initiatives. She also served as vice principal and director of student support for the combined three years at the Upphams Corner Charter School, and was the national program director for COLAGE, a nationwide parent support network for LGBTQ+ parents. She brings to the Runcle School a rich understanding of issues of equity and social justice, and years of valuable experience working in diverse and vibrant social communities, school communities. Ms. Castellano earned her master's degree in education at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and her bachelor's from Marlboro College in Vermont. So Elizabeth, well, you bring a lot of resources for us. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm gonna hop off and join Donna with our kindergarten parents.
That's right. Thank you. Rachel Eo. Hi Rach. Rachel is the curriculum coordinator of the High School World Language Program. Brookline's long-serving world language coordinator. I always say Agnes, but she wants me to say Agnass. How do we say her first name, Rachel?
Agnes.
The G is silent. Agnes. Okay, thank you. Albert Tola will be retiring in November. We are fortunate, really, that Ms. Eo, an experienced Japanese teacher, and recent associate dean at Brookline High School, has been tapped to take over this important leadership role. As associate dean, she worked proactively to address current concerns, and is known for her collaborative and respectful work with colleagues, students, and families. She began teaching Japanese, wow, and social studies at Brookline High School in 1999. And head of school, Anthony Meyer credits her for building the thriving Japanese program at the school over the years. Her leadership initiatives include designing and implementing an innovative Japanese advanced placement curriculum, using authentic materials to increase student communication skills, and the development and instruction of Asian-American studies and Asian Studies courses in the Social Science Studies Department, with the focus on race, identity, and social justice. Ms. Eo has been a tremendous contributor to the Brookline Public Schools, particularly at the high school, and bringing such a perspective from those far eastern cultures that is just amazing here. So welcome into your new role, Rachel. We're looking forward to your work there.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And you know, Donna is, you know, right now on Zoom, and Elizabeth's joining her. But Donna Finnegan has been in the school system for a long time. She's gonna serve as interim principal at the Runcle School. She has been serving as acting principal of Runcle since March, and was named interim principal for this year, 2021. In May, Ms. Finnegan... No, no, sorry about that. Ms. Finnegan has had decades of experience as an educational leader here. Not only in, in Brookline, but she spent 12 years in the Concord Public Schools, and has been a part of the public schools of Brookline for 20 years. In Brookline, she has been a speech-language pathologist, team facilitator, served as vice principal of Runcle School for four and a half years. She holds a bachelor's degree from the University of New Hampshire, master's degree from Emerson College, and she has earned her principal certification through an Educational Leadership Institute. In the short time that she has been the leader at the Runcle School, she has already done an impressive job connecting with school community. We witnessed that tonight, supporting the Runcle faculty, and leading the school in its successful reopening effort. Her commitment to the Runcle community is unparalleled, and we are fortunate to have her in this critical position. So Donna, if you can feel us, we welcome you into your position. Jocelyn, where's Jocelyn? Ah, good. Justin Lumley, vice principal at the Lawrence School. Jocelyn joined the leadership of the Lawrence School having mostly served as academy director for the K-2 assistant principal at the Orchard Garden School in Boston. And it's a K-8 pilot school, where she worked for 10 years. In that role, she supported grade-level teams in curriculum planning, instructional strategies, professional development, and the development of a strategic action plan for students. Interesting concept. She developed strong productive working relationships with families to ensure academic and social emotional success for her students. Ms. Lumley was a teacher in Boston for six years, including kindergarten and special education for grades three and four. She also served as an instructional coach in the early childhood department. She has completed professional development in restorative justice practices, and responsive classroom and crisis prevention intervention. Strong background in student management, and in redirecting students in a positive direction. Ms. Lumley earned her BS from Northeastern, holds a master's of science degree from Simmons, and one from in educational leadership, and one in urban elementary education. Strong background, strong academic background, strong cultural and values background to bring to Brookline. Very happy to have you here, Jocelyn. Welcome to the Brookline Schools.
Thank you, Jim. I'm delighted to be here.
Okay, Jennifer Martin. Jen? Hi Jen. Interim curriculum coordinator, high school social studies. Jennifer will be leading the high school social studies department for the 2021 school year, taking over from Gary Schiffman, who is on a one-year lead to write a book. And Ms. Martin has been Brookline educator since 2005. In addition to teaching in the social studies department, including ancient world history, modern world history, and US history at various levels, Ms. Martin has also taken on various leadership roles at the high school. She was the coordinator of the advisory program for 11 years. She has served as a teacher leader for the Anti-Defamation League. Whoops, lost my place. Peer leader for the Anti-Defamation League Peer Leader Program since 2016. She currently serves as the BHS Student Intervention Team. She is also currently working on the Whipple Writing Fellowship Program. Ms. Martin is an active participant in the district's mentoring program, having mentored four new teachers at the high school over the years. Head of school, Anthony Meyer notes that Jen is a smart, compassionate educator who is skilled in working with colleagues, students, and families. She is a natural for this leadership position. Those strong words, Anthony. Thank you. Yeah, very, so Jennifer, welcome.
I just thank you, but I want to tell you all that Claire Galian is an exceptional student. I'm also the head of legislature, and she is, you are not going to regret having her with you. So great job, Claire, and thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you. Dr. Matt Rosenthal. Where's Matt? Hi Matthew. Matt is gonna be the curriculum coordinator for mathematics K through eight. We welcome Dr. Rosenthal to a new role in the district. He's gonna be the K-8 math coordinator. Previously, he served as the program coordinator for the enrichment and challenge support ECS program since 2015. As ECS coordinator, Matt provided extensive professional development opportunities, particularly in the area of innovation and project-based learning. He oversaw the grade-level curriculum to incorporate opportunities for challenge and extension, and collaborated with district coordinators to build educated capacity around instruction. He also led a grant-funded team of STEAM research integration. Prior to his work in Brookline, Dr. Rosenthal was the head of the grade 6 through 8 mathematics department in the Lexington Public Schools. He also served for five years as the math coordinator for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. So he earned his BA up there in Canada at McGill, his master of art in teaching at BU, and his doctorates from William Howard Taft University. Certainly has an extensive background, deeply embedded in the mathematics and the sciences. So you're well positioned, Matthew. Welcome in your new role.
Thank you very much. Great to be here. Thank you.
Okay. Joe Russo. Joe, are you here? So, you know, Joe is a late addition to the Brookline Public Schools right now. But Joe began his career as a Brookline teacher. As I have come to learn, working in Brookline, that no matter where you want to go in this world, you have to go through Brookline to get there. And Joe's a perfect example of that. I mean, I say that in jest, but many a truth is said in jest. You have, it's unbelievable how everybody touches Brookline. We were looking for a HR director, and we were unsuccessful in that search, but enormously successful, I believe, and fortunate to have Joe Russo join us. Joe, as I said, he began his, his career as a Brookline teacher, teaching grades one, two, and three at the Driscoll School for 15 years. He was the principal, then he moved to Newton and became principal of the Horace Mann School for 10 years. And then he went to Central Office, where he was assistant superintendent for human resources, and then moved over to assistant superintendent for elementary education. Joe then retired, became a coach to urban principals through the internship through the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and has been an instructional coach to novice principals across the metropolitan area through Teachers 21 since 2014. So we are, we are very fortunate to have Joe. His knowledge of leadership and his breadth of understanding of how schools work has already proven his support of principals through this enormously stressful time has been remarkable. And we were at a place where we asked Joe to come in to talk with us. He may take this job. Came in on Tuesday, and we kept him Tuesday. Put him to work within a half hour of showing up. So welcome back to Brookline, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thanks, everyone. It's good to be back in Brookline. It's kind of funny to be back, and the little faces and names keep coming up. And I'm happy to have my colleague Barbara and Helen, who I knew as a school committee member back here in the 90s. Sorry Helen, but here you are, still here. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
That's perfectly fine, Joe. I'm thrilled you're back.
All right, so Colin. Colin Wayonama. How'd I do?
Close. Waynoyama.
Waynoyama. He's, I cracked this too. Colin Waynoyama, interim coordinator of K-12 Wellness Education. And I really want to thank Colin for her patience, and her perseverance, and her ability to have an understanding. This position was cut. Colin served in this position last year. The position was removed from the budget, and we discovered that we really needed this position. So we were fortunate to be able to move some things around and welcome Colin back to her position. Colin began serving this position last year. In her role as interim, she was responsible for coordinating all aspects of curriculum development planning for health, physical education with teachers district-wide. She brought her energy and passion to the work collaborating with district colleagues in programming, staffing, and scheduling. Before becoming interim coordinator, she worked as a wellness educator at the Lawrence School for over 20 years. For many of those years, she also served as the district coordinator for grades five through eight cross-country track and field meets, which became highlight on the annual calendar for hundreds of students. While at Lawrence, she honed her leadership skills serving as a teacher rep to the school site council, participating in many teachers' professional development groups, and serving as a mentor to new teachers in the school. We are very pleased that you're here, Colin, and the enthusiasm you're bringing to that position is gonna benefit many, many students, particularly now as we're dealing with the need for more creative teaching.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. I wouldn't be the wellness coordinator if I didn't role model some wellness things. So I wrote in my gratitude journal this morning, and I just wanted to extend some gratitude to, first, to the committee for reinstating the position, secondly, to all the teachers and leaders out there who have helped me to become the leader I'm, I'm becoming, especially my leadership camp from last spring, and to my wellness family, who really worked hard advocating all summer for this position to be reinstated. And then also to my own family, to my mother, retired kindergarten teacher, after 35 years, and my father, and my beautiful daughters, who are supposed to do a cameo and come in and say a quick little smile and a wave. But I just wanted to lead with, I wanted to lead with gratitude to all of you and tell you, I'm so excited to lead the wellness education for the town of Brookline.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's that spirit that permeates this district. It's amazing. And finally, David Euclid, interim principal of the Driscoll School. David? Very good. Mr. Euclid had been tapped to lead the Driscoll School as interim principal for the, for the 2021 school year. Given the launch of the Driscoll School building project, the role of the principal is more important than ever. We are so fortunate to have David in this position. He was vice principal at Driscoll since 2010. Over the course of those 10 years, he was involved in nearly, nearly every aspect of school success, including work on instructional leadership, building management, coordination of student services, supervision and evaluation of staff, and collaboration with educated teams at almost every grade level. He knows just about all there is to know about Driscoll. I mean, what a statement. And that includes students, families, faculty, staff, and the needs and priorities of the community. Before joining the faculty at Driscoll, Mr. Euclid spent nine years as an educational technology specialist at the Ridley School in Brookline. He also spent five years in the Wilmington School as a third and fourth grade classroom teacher. David, welcome. I know that a heck of a year to take on an assignment like this, but you're well positioned to do it, and your background really is helpful to all of us. So thank you, David Euclid, and welcome.
Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate those kind words. And I just want to say I'm very excited to be working alongside Michelle Bartley, who's joining me this year, and very proud of Claire Galian, who did an amazing job presenting at Driscoll alumnus. She did us really proud, Claire.
That's, that's great. That is great. Shall I continue, Suzanne?
Yes, Jim. You're on next again.
Okay.
Doing your superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I do have a few, a few comments. And, you know, to say, as we're on the eve of opening school, I do want to say that everybody in the system, I don't care where they are, everybody in the system is working, are working at 150%, make no mistake about it. And the, the commitment to the students and to colleagues is, it's extraordinary. And people are trying to do all they can to, to make this happen. And at the end of my remarks tonight, I am going to read a very brief message that was written by one of our principals, Torrance Lewis. He wrote a brief passage that I think captures the spirit and the reality of what we're dealing with. So that's a little tease, so that you hang on a little bit. So I'm, I'm going to hit a number of topics that, and, and I have to say that as we get closer, and we're moving through this, we've said this over and over and over again. But I'm gonna say it again, and Torrance is gonna say it much better than I will ever say it. The only thing that's constant that we're dealing with is change. And you know, it'd be nice if I could say, you know, you kind of get used to all this change. You don't get used to all this change. It's, it's very, very challenging to try to find that balance. And when you think you've hit the center and think you're balanced, then all of a sudden, something happens and you're not balanced anymore. So sort of with that is, is the context. I'm gonna tell you, give you the report that I have. You know, planned outdoor time. How are we doing the planned outdoor time? Principals have spent a lot of time over the last two weeks updating their schedules for in-person, hybrid, and remote, and outdoor time. Schools do need to concentrate this time differently, as they'll be having different enrollments and availability of tents and/or outdoor space. So when scheduling this time, principals are also keeping in mind equity and accessibility issues. Because there are some students who, for one reason or another, cannot access the tent location, and therefore do not want students penalized in any form if they cannot attend the outside time. That's been a little stressful. With that being said, there are a few examples here of ways in which tents and outdoor time will be utilized. They're gonna be used for building relationships, and having kids come together and, and get to know each other a little bit. Recession, snacks and breaks, mask breaks, appropriate outdoor class activities and/or conversations, which different departments have been looking at, and a place to have read alouds with, with the class. Most school leaders are currently planning the time. Most school leaders are currently planning the time for kindergarten and first to return students. However, they admit they need to see the tent size and the locations so they can get a firm answer on the number of times a week to be outside or have recess will occur. Want to see what the space is going to be like. When all students return to school building, schools will prioritize a once a week minimum for each grade level. Note that it's important to note that the tent supplier has pushed back the date for when tents will be completed and delivered. So there's some delay on the receiving tents. And the plus time, the remote plus, what is that? In addition to planning for outdoor tent activities, students who are in in-person, hybrid school, leaders have also been making determinations about plus time in our remote plus model. As a reminder, plus time is designated for students who are learning remotely. The goal is to connect these students in person with staff and peers at their schools at scheduled times until the hybrid model for their grade level begins. Timing for plus will take transportation needs into account and to the best of the school's ability, reduce the amount of lost learning time. Schools have already begun scheduling meet and greets and material distribution for these students and families. Other options include listening conferences and safety socials. At the beginning of the school year, when the majority of students are remote, schools will do their best to accommodate once a week plus time for each grade level. Enrollment update. So in your packet, school committee members receive two updated enrollment documents that outline the number of pre-K through twelfth grade students enrolled in the schools by school and grade level, as well as the number of pre-K students through twelfth students by school and grade level, with the Remote Learning Academy students included. Below, some, well, what I have, some highlight levels of the numbers. So that, for example, all students in pre-K through twelve, as of nine, eight, a couple of days ago, the district-wide enrollment for students was seven thousand sixty-six students. That includes the Remote Learning. No, no. Yeah, it does, yeah. But the Remote Learning Academy, as of nine, eight, the number of students in the Remote Learning Academy K through eight is six hundred eighty-nine students. Based on enrollment, the Remote Learning Academy will be a four-section school. It is like opening a whole new school. First to return. So the first to return are defined as most vulnerable learners, materials fee students, and students of resident teachers. So the most vulnerable, materials fee, and students of resident teachers. As of nine, nine, five hundred ninety students were offered invitations to the K-8 first-to-return group. Two hundred seventy-three accepted those invitations. So out of the six hundred plus, almost, that were invited, approximately half, around three hundred, have accepted. Number of classes is still being determined based on room size and needs of students. Staffing update. As of yesterday afternoon, we have been able to, for the high majority, ensure that pre-K through twelve homeschoolers, remotes, are staffed and ready to open for September sixteenth. As of Thursday morning, the Remote Learning Academy still has open positions at the elementary, middle level, and as well as support staff openings, you know, such as special education, English language learners. It's important to note that we posted those positions, and so that's going to take a little bit for us to catch up to as we have the postings and formalize who is going to be teaching in that program. Our principals and senior leadership have been working around the clock, seriously, to help staff the academy and human resources. And again, that's in flux, and it's in flux because of the posting. And when the posting is completed, then we will go forward with the staffing. Posting the positions to staff and to apply for the Remote Learning Academy is the next day. We are confident that we can get these positions filled for September sixteenth opening. We have a high level of confidence that we're going to be all right with that. And we're clearly all working very hard to make that happen. Ventilation updates. Ventilation testing and upgrades for classrooms that are being used starting September sixteenth have been completed. Stickers, we've talked about those, are being placed on the door of each room that will show the test results, including number of air exchanges per hour. A green level of good to excellent will be provided on the sticker to indicate the space as the level of air exchange per hour recommended if more than one individual is in the classroom space. In addition, the schools received approximately six hundred of the nine hundred HEPA filters ordered. About half of those were received this week and delivered to school buildings. Priority for filters went to pre-K and K classrooms, as well as classrooms being utilized for the first time to first return students. So what we're saying basically is that the rooms have, as Matt and his team are going through and clearing those rooms for the kind of air exchange that we had committed to, that's going to be validated by having a sticker put on the door of that room to validate that. And I will say that today was an extraordinary day with Charlie Simmons and his team going around to every school and checking all of the bathrooms. Because the bathrooms are ventilated through fans, those that do not have a window, which most do not have windows. The air exchange happens, it's not an air exchange, the drawing out of air happens through the fans. And there was some concern about whether fans working. Well, with the, with the help of some committee members, Helen, thank you, Charlie mobilized his team and went through every school and produced a document showing all the work that had been done and the bathrooms, fans, and the status. And they are nearly all up and running. I was able to forward that document to the principals and ask them to make that available for teachers to see as well. It's just another example of when you call on people and there's a need, they deliver. So it's with great gratitude that we express our thanks. I sent Charlie a note on behalf of all the kids and all the teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you for really handling that without delay. It was, it made my day, frankly. Okay. Targets on hybrid reopening. This is, I'm going to talk about this for a second. We certainly understand that not having potential dates for when hybrid learning may begin in the schools for the one through twelve students leaves many staff members and families feeling unsettled. However, given that we are still undergoing testing and undergoing upgrades for our building and classrooms, and we remain focused on successfully opening school on September sixteenth, that's an important point. Because everybody's energy, one hundred and twenty percent of everybody's energy is on opening school on September sixteen. The Remote Learning Academy and the pre-K, the kindergarten, the buildings, the lavatories, all of what needs to be done, the staffing, and all the complications that are involved with that are taking every single bit of energy that is happening, compounded by the HEPA filters that just arrived and the upgrades happening to the buildings in terms of all the other classrooms and having them, what we're calling cleared for occupancy at the exchange rate we want, leaves precious little time to think about others. On the sixteenth, when school opens and the kindergarten's in the pre-K yet, we are going to be then turning our energy toward the one through twelve. And this may come in different places, and it may be one, two, and nine. You know, we're looking at the different configurations we will do there. But at the next meeting, after the sixteenth, then we will have target dates for when we actually think we'll be able to move other students in. To have a target date, which is tempting to put a date out there. And the problem with that is, if you put a date out there and then you have to change the date, the level of disappointment that comes with that, some people will be okay with that. But the level of disappointment that comes with that adds another layer of stress onto people. And it was interesting, I had a great meeting, I thought, with the PTO presidents and the site council chairs, as well as some of the other organizations in town who attend. And one of the attendees was a person from Emerson College. I forget her exact title now, but it has to do with, oh, I forget her title, but I think student adjustment or something like that.
She's a dean of students, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. She cautioned about putting a date, be careful about putting a date and then having to change the date. And I'm going to call her. I told her I would. Because she did that, they did that at Emerson. And they had people sort of lined up and ready, and then the disappointment, she said, was really not worth it. So we are, we are going to open school, by the way, it's Wednesday that we open school, which is breathtaking in itself. But on Wednesday, we open school. And when that happens, then we're going to shift our energy to looking at the other grades, looking at the facilities, and then putting a target date out there. If we put a target date out there, it's not going to be a theoretical hypothetical, let's hope for this. It's going to be a target date that we believe we can hit and that makes sense. So I hope, I hope that's, I hope people will have some understanding of that as we struggle to go through this. So with that, I want to read this message. Torrance, Torrance Lewis did a little reflection. And he wrote this to his whole community. This is basically, he titled it "The Last Minute Lifestyle." And here's what he says. "We are all living in the last-minute lifestyle at the moment, during this very difficult time. This means we are getting mandates at the last minute. We are getting pertinent information at the last minute. Something changes at the last minute. We get the go-ahead at the last minute. We don't know enough to explain something until the last minute. We are waiting for something to happen until the last minute. We are denied at the last minute, and so on." And he says, "The last-minute lifestyle does not gel with educators nor with parents. Though you, me, and everyone may want something as soon as possible, we must understand that everything coming to you these days is absolutely as soon as possible. Please remember patience, understanding, and flexibility as we venture through this together into these very uncharted territory." So I was moved by that, because he is absolutely so right that we're living in, right now, in a last-minute lifestyle. Very hard to wrap my head around the last-minute lifestyle. On a personal level, very difficult to communicate something and then have to communicate something opposite of that at the last moment. And, you know, it's easy for me to be tempted to say, oh my, why couldn't that have happened, blah, 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 blah? And then I'm communicating something that has changed. And when I read this, it gave me a sense, it gave me personally a sense of, sort of, entered, a little, I found my center. And in terms of, this is, this is like the life we're living right now. And I'm not going to adjust to it, I'm not going to be happy with it. But I'm also saying to myself, you have to deal with what you have. And try dealing with it. And his line here, that he says that absolutely, absolutely, everything that is coming to you is coming to you as soon as possible. It's hard to understand that and accept that. But I have a now and stand and accept it. He has given me peace. I hope he's given you some peace. Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I think most people that were introduced have left. But if you have not left yet, you certainly are welcome to. You're welcome to stay as long as you want. But you don't need to stay for very long meetings, or you can catch us on big. So, welcome to everybody. I have to say, Jim, it gave me a ten-minute moment of normalcy to be able to meet our new people. It's kind of like the old days when we would have somebody come and do a little presentation of song and dance just for the fun of it or for the honor of it. And so it's good to have the new people introduced, and thank you for that. We're going to move now to public comment, and we have about six people. So first person up, so please remember, it's two to three minutes. And first person up, some of these are old friends, they keep coming, so they have lots to tell us. So Carol Sideman is first, and then Acacia Landfield after that.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Carol. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, it's hard to follow all that, but I guess I'll try. So, good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I do so with much gratitude for the mountains of work that you have done and will do to return our kids to school. I don't take that lightly at all. I speak to you as a mother of twins entering tenth grade at Brookline High School. Because of their profiles, one will begin remote plus while the other will begin in person because of the most vulnerable population cohort. As most others, my anxiety is pretty ramped up, and my kids are too. I have a few questions and comments, of course, that are on my highest on my list. I have many others that won't come up tonight. So at first, some things regarding the high school, some of it was covered a little bit with the superintendent's report. In some ways, I feel I need to reiterate my concerns about such. So the email I got today, I think around four o'clock, or this afternoon, at some point from the school, there is actually no indication what the plans are for the plus. And that makes me very concerned. And I'm more concerned now that I hear that it's a half an hour a week, or something to that effect. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I heard. At least it's once a week. I'm not sure for how long. My kids really need that, and the Zoom social emotional stuff. Honestly, I know that it may be the best that you can do at the moment, but it is really in conflict with each other. It's just, they need to be with each other, and they need to meet their teachers in person. And I do think there's ways to solve the access problem. I'm an interpreter, I'm committed to physical access, but I do think there's a way to solve that. And we need to know the most vulnerable schedule, when they are actually expected to show up next week. At this point, we don't know. We've not been told at the high school. Also, the high school, there's no Z block, which I understand for scheduling purposes. I do want to know if there are any plans or considerations for things like band or drama or other self-expression that can be done. I know there's been some approval of sports, but I haven't heard about arts and other things that kids who are not sporty also need. And I haven't heard any plans to meet with the high school parents other than the ninth graders. And I, as one, could use some support and knowledge from the school as to what they plan to do and how we can best support our students to be successful. So that's about the high school. Am I going, do I have any time left?
I think you have fifteen seconds, Carol.
Okay. I do want to say that the mask policy needs to be firm. I'm concerned about that. And mostly, I'm concerned with the social emotional portions of. what's, what is or isn't gonna happen as we open up. And I would like to see the school, even though you say that there is no, you know, permanent schedule, I know that because my life as a sign language interpreter is changing every second, so I, I understand that. But we, we have to try to commit, we have to try to say, "The school will, by this time, bring all kids back." You know, barring any issue with COVID, blah, blah, blah. You can certainly put in, you know, a COVID exception, but you, you have to try to think about what you're gonna hold yourself to. So, I appreciate, I really do appreciate all your time, thank you.
Thank you Carol. Acacia, you're up next, and then Steve Albinis.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just trying here.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, thank you for your time tonight, and my name is Acacia Landfield. I'm a parent of two rising first graders. Thank you to the school committee and to Superintendent Marini and to all of, everyone in leadership for your exhaustive work all summer to achieve pandemic resilient schools, which we all know are essential, not only for our kids, but to society, to be able to continue not only this year, but for several years to come. Thank you also for the reminders that we all need to be flexible and adaptable, and I think it's, it's easy to lose, lose sight of that, but thank you for that, for those, for that language from Mr. Lewis and from Superintendent Marini. With that being said, I wanted to ask one specific question and address that, and then kind of four other separate questions. So, there was a plan to return K to two full-time in person when the plans were originally announced. And we understand, you know, that due to ventilation, that, that's why the rollbacks happened. But when those rollbacks happened, we were told that it was only due to ventilation, and we understood, and we do understand, we understand all of, all of the measures are extremely important to backstop each other. But when the new plans were announced, with no comments or discussion by the school committee at all, somehow first and second grade were no longer included and prioritized in the full-time in-person return. It's amazing and great that beep and kindergarten are going back, but somehow first and second grade got lost, and it seems like it was a decision by omission because it was never discussed. The first, so school committee members, the public, everyone was very confused for over a week. No one knew what was happening, and then at the next school committee meeting, it was explained that there were, there were challenges with space. So for, and then ever since then, when the subject has come up, at least at the last meeting, for example, there was a commitment by nearly every school committee member to study this issue and to, to, to problem solve. So, I asked tonight if you can please address what that commitment is to solve, what space issues exist, and to get the first and second graders back in person as was planned. Is this still a commitment? What are the alternative spaces that are being explored to achieve this? Because there are solutions to make this happen, and we all know how remote will continue to fail kids' social emotional needs, not to mention their ability to access their education, which is their legal right. Despite the amazing gargantuan efforts that their teachers are making, it is just not a learning mode that is, that is appropriate or will ever work. And I say this as someone who used to work in online learning myself and as a former classroom teacher. It, it's, it's gonna fail our pre-literate students. So, I'm asking, begging, but also asking if, if there can be a discussion and a commitment to the subjects in particular. The next four things I wanted to mention are questions, one of them is slightly related to this topic. There was a proposal by a parent organizer, because there are many parents, I think, as we know, that are very upset by what's happening right now. And there was a proposal for teachers to be at six feet, but kids to be at three feet separation from each other. And I'm wondering if this can be something that can be studied, because this issue seems to be quite political and not based upon the state and federal guidance, which is for three or more feet. And that one distinction, which is one of many mitigation measures, does seem to be literally the issue that is preventing all of the elementary students from going back. And, you know, we understand the reasons why, but there's a lot of politicization of this issue, and if we can separate ourselves from that and, and find a compromise that would help everyone, then that seems like it would be a great thing to study.
So Acacia, that's three minutes, so if you could wrap it up, that would be helpful.
Right, three more, three more quick questions, all right. Number two is a question that came up because of a parent in Holliston who was reporting that her child, a South Carolina college student, was being counted as a positive case in Holliston, even though he's been out of Massachusetts for many weeks. So, my question is, are positive cases of kids away at college being counted in our town's numbers? Because apparently this is happening, so that's just a question. Number three was the subject of silent observers for parents in the negotiation meetings. And number four was, is there a way, a forum or a way that teachers can privately express their opinions on going back to school? Outside of, you know, obviously, they can message the school committee, but there are a lot of teachers who have expressed the desire to return and are messaging parent organizers privately, and yet they feel they cannot speak up due to the backlash and the politicized nature of the reopening debate. So I'm just putting that out there as a way for teacher, is there a way for teachers to be able to, you know, collectively express those ideas besides individually emailing the school committee? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Acacia. Steve, you're up next, and then Kayla Nicholson.
Evening, thanks for the time, and I'm a parent in Brookline of a rising freshman, my son graduated last year. Before I get to my main comment, I do want to note that I do recognize the considerable challenges for our school district and appreciate the efforts of all those involved in a school start, a safe and productive start for our students. But earlier this week, I received an email regarding the news that BHS Athletics for the school year might be canceled due to budgeting issues. And tonight, there would be a vote regarding this decision. As I understand now, this vote will not happen, and the current mission is not to cancel, but explore how our teams can return to competition in a safe and responsible manner. I hope that that is still the case. That being said, I would still like to advocate for the support of BHS Athletics in our town. If the goal is to provide a well-rounded education for our students, then I strongly believe a competitive athletic program should not be discounted. The life lessons learned on the field, court, course, and mat can have a profound impact on a young person's life. Personally, when I moved to Brookline and inquired about athletics, I heard on many occasions from some parent administrators, and yes, a school committee member, that athletics were not important in Brookline. Honestly, I, I was surprised and disappointed to hear this consistent response, and I believe this notion is incredibly short-sighted and hoped going forward with school support and, and community support, and yes, some success that this perception could be changed. I personally spent four years working with a group of really passionate parents to support the Brookline wrestling team through the grapplers booster club. In a few years, a few short years, the team, with a lot of hard work, progressed from a one and twenty-five record to twenty-six and four with back-to-back league championships. The Booster Club also started a youth program, which helped connect middle and high schoolers through coaching and mentoring, and initiated a pipeline to the high school. With a strong support for an athletic program, or a strong support for athletic program has many benefits for students, but can also help unite our community and increase school pride. In closing, from my experience working with these passionate coaches, student athletes, and parents, I can tell you firsthand that athletics are absolutely important in Brookline, and I hope that we can count on the school committee to support a strong athletics program going forward when it's safe. And I do want to emphasize when it's safe. I do, I do hear the concerns, and I have the concerns myself, but if it's low-hanging fruit, just cutting athletics, I think it should be considered and, like it was mentioned earlier, at least exploring safe options, I, I think would benefit the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Steve. Kayla, you're up, and then Avisha Lindenboim.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great. Thank you for taking my comments tonight. I'm a teacher in Brookline. I want, with all my whole heart, to be in the building. All of us teachers do. If everything was physically and logistically safe, of course, I would go back in. All of us teachers would go back in. But today is September tenth, and with school starting on September sixteenth, our buildings are not physically or logistically safe to go back into right now. My classroom, as well as most rooms in my school, have not received the safety sticker indicating safe ventilation. Our school still doesn't know who or where the first to return students will be taught. Our remote teaching schedules and procedures have way too many holes and loose ends. The only way to solve these problems and to ensure a safe and successful school year is with a fully negotiated MOU. Without a fully negotiated MOU, you are setting teachers up to fail. The longer you draw out negotiations, the longer you withhold important tools that we teachers need to do our jobs. I would like the public to know this. The reason it seems like teachers are not sharing information fast or fully enough is not because we don't want to, but without an MOU, we teachers do not know our class sizes yet, we do not know our schedules yet, we do not even yet know who our students will be that we will be teaching this year. This is all because the school committee hasn't negotiated any of this with teachers yet. Families, this is why it feels like you haven't heard from us. We want to assure that sixty-three percent of unsatisfied high schoolers that Claire mentioned in her poll, that we teachers are here to help them have a safe and successful school year. But without an MOU, we literally do not know which students we will be teaching for sure. I would also urge any families who would like to know more about why this seems to be taking so long, I would urge you to please contact the school committee and ask them for open bargaining sessions so that you can see for yourself how much teachers are being stalled and shunted. Public, please know that we teachers are doing all that we can possibly do right now, but without an MOU, we are stopped dead right here in our tracks. School committee, please bargain an MOU with the union with all deliberate speed. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you Kayla. Avisha, you're next, and then Amy Lindenboim.
Hello. Dear school committee, my name is Avisha Lindenboim, and I'm entering fourth grade at Lincoln School. I believe that grades K one and two should go back in person. Research says that those grades aren't good at remote learning. Speaking of personal experience and facts, I believe these things. I have a younger brother going into first grade, and this spring was terrible for him. He's not on Zoom right now because he hates Zoom, Webex, or Skype. In most families, both parents work, and some can't afford to have a nanny, and most kids his age need someone in, in the room to help make sure that they're paying attention. So how are they supposed to work? Like, for the parents? And how are kids supposed to learn without parents quitting their jobs? I think they need to get back in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Amy, you're up.
Hello?
Go right ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name is Amy Lindenboim, town meeting member for precinct five and Lincoln School parent. I had hoped to provide new comments on refined reopening plans, but no information was provided prior to this meeting, and as Dr. Marini said, there, there doesn't seem to really be any answers to some of the basic questions that parents and students really care about, such as class assignments, daily schedules, opportunities for in-person social meetups, and most importantly, when each class can expect to return to some form of in-person learning. So I'll return to my most important comment, repeated at other public meetings, and expressed in a letter to Dr. Marini, the school committee, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that was signed by a hundred and seventy-five parents of first and second graders enrolled in Brookline Public Schools. And the just, the thrust of that letter was, "Please return not just the beep in kindergartners, but also first and second graders to full-time in-person instruction, the earliest possible opportunity." "Our direct experience, supported by pedagogical evidence, is that children in first and second grade cannot learn how to read, write, or progress in other foundational skills via remote learning without the constant onsite adult supervision and instruction." "Basic social, emotional, and communication skills also suffer when children do not have the routine opportunity to learn and play in person with a diverse group of their peers. Even the proposed two to three days in class, two to three days at home schedule of the hybrid plan, if and when it is finally implemented, will not provide the predictable routine young children so desperately need, especially since children at this age have only a loose concept of a calendar." "Brookline's incoming first and second graders have already lost three months, one-third of their most foundational first or second year of public school elementary education. By the time this school year is tentatively set to begin on September sixteenth, last year's kindergartners will have been out of school almost as long as they were ever in it. Skills have been lost likely on a perverse sliding scale according to income, which widens existing inequities. For most children in first and second grade, the proposed hybrid plan, limiting in-person education to halftime, will result in only half of an education. At this formative age, any learning time scheduled for when a child is not in the physical presence of a live teacher and classmates is essentially the forced transfer of core early elementary teaching responsibilities onto the shoulders of parents without compensation. As the majority of parents in Brookline are working parents, this transfer would ask them to either A, sacrifice their paid work livelihood in order to teach the children, or B, pay a third party to provide this service, which also would exacerbate existing inequities, and I think that we can do better than that, and I know that we can do better than that. We hope that children agree that the investment in Brookline's youngest elementary school students now will pay dividends for years to come. Unfortunately, the inverse is also likely to be true. The classrooms are nearly ready. The health metrics of Brookline support in-person instruction with the extensive safeguards we're planning. We need you to work to solve the staffing problem. Thank you for considering the children."
Thank you Amy. That concludes our public comment. We will now move on to the consent agenda. The first item is approval of the minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you Mariah, do I have a second? Jennifer, thank you. Are there any corrections, additions before we vote? Okay, we'll go through it. Susan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David? David, are you there? You may not, you may not be there. And I vote yes as well, so.
I'm here, I vote yes.
Oh, thank you David, sorry. And I vote yes as well, thank you. We are now going to take up the, it's an issue related to solar panels, I believe, and Karen Bruton. Are you going to present? Hi Karen, there you are, to me, anyway. Are you presenting tonight?
I do have a couple slides, I know you're behind on your schedule, do you have like ten minutes? Does that sound good?
Sure, we're, we're always. Sure, we're, we're always behind, so that's okay.
Okay. I will try to be brief. Um, my name is Kara Bruton. I'm the Economic Development Director. Tonight I am asking the school committee to vote to execute on behalf of the Public Schools of Brookline as access manager for power purchase agreements with the town of Brookline and Select Energy Development, related to the installation and maintenance of solar panels for up to 20 years. And I'll shortcut the rest of this at the high school, the Aquatics Center, and Tappan Gym, the Ridley School, Runkle School, and also for the chair to sign on behalf of the school committee in these agreements. I don't know all the work and stress that you are going through right now to get schools reopened, but I do hear there's a lot going on. I have to admit, I took a risk tonight and tried to give Public Schools Director, sorry, Public Buildings Director Charlie Simmons a couple hours off this evening. Uh, but Building Commissioner Dan Bennett requested that I let you know that he, Charlie, and Ray Masek are very much involved on board and looking forward to forward on the solar panel installation, especially now that the Select Board took unanimous positive vote this past Tuesday night. Um, I will also briefly add that Associate Town Council John Bukke, our Chief Procurement Officer, Dave Jackakis, and Finance Director Gina Fanconi have worked with Charlie and I on this agreement that's in front of you. I understand that you have memos, fairly detailed summary memos from dated August 5th and September 4th. But for those that might be just joining the conversation for the first time tonight, power purchase agreements effectively permits the use of several municipal rooftops in exchange for a cheaper electricity supply rate. In this case, Select would construct, maintain, operate, and own the solar system on our property. And we, the town, have an option to then purchase the system as soon as year 7 and then intermittently until year 20. Matt Shortslee from Select is trying to join us on Zoom and is having some troubles getting an invite, but we'll see what happens. Um, I'd like to start with a quick visual of what the panels would actually look like installed and then just show a couple of slides to show the buildings that we're talking about tonight and then summarize the savings and costs. So I'm going to try to share my screen. This is a very brief, like 5-second snapshot of, um, you'll see a drone kind of going from ground level up to the roofs. And this is in the Fitchburg Public School System. Which just gets you kind of a sense of what this will actually look like. You don't need to listen to assistant superintendent, but you can see the solar panels there on the left. Um, and I can pull it back one more time. So you get a sense of how low profile they are. The highest portion of the panels do stick up about 15 inches from the roof. Um, but they are fairly, um, flat and also, uh, dark compared to how kind of older panel installations were done in the past. I'm now going to show you a couple of slides, PowerPoint. Okay, so we're talking about the Ridley School on Harvard Street. Um, the panels are shown in blue. This is basically an aerial photo. Um, and they're kind of throughout, um, in, in between a lot of the equipment that's on the roof. At the high school, right now, um, all we're talking about is the, kind of the northeast wing. I understand it's called the science wing, or at least for now, until the STEM building is, is built, perhaps. It's a northeast wing that was not touched as part of the construction project. We have been asked to, um, go ahead and move forward and look at, um, potential solar installation and kind of a second phase for the new high school wing, as well as the new building on Cypress Street. But that is not part of tonight's agreement. And then also the, um, rooftop of the crane pool and the Tappan Gym. And then finally, the Runkle School, kind of all the way around. So what I'm sharing with you tonight are savings from just year 1. What you'll notice as we go through the different sites is that the fixed rate that, um, which is cheaper than our, um, cost grid rate. So we pay right now about 11.44 cents, um, with our contract that we have through Constellation. The rate that would be reduced for the portion of energy used by these panels ranges between 7.5 and 8.5 cents. And you can compare that to the 11.5 cents for Ridley, Runkle, for the high school, um, 8.5 cents, and for the crane, the Aquatics Center, 8 cents. So what this means is across all the sites, um, in the first year, we anticipate electricity savings of about just shy of $33,000. Um, and that, you know, depending on what electricity markets do over the next 20 years, could be quite a bit of savings, um, if electricity prices continue to inch upwards as they have historically, because this rate would be flat. However, there's a big asterisk to that because in the last 6 months due to COVID, electricity prices have, um, really dived down. We expect those to come back up. But I, um, I no longer feel it's responsible to talk about savings after year 1, just because we are in a different era. In addition to the electricity savings, the, um, we would also be receiving pilot payments. These are paid, kind of set payments, in lieu of, uh, the equipment tax, um, and that equals $157,000 over the 20 years. The Public Schools of Brookline, um, their role in this power purchase agreement includes, um, the principal of the school having approval of a specific access plan. Um, and that's in conjunction along with, uh, Charlie Simmons. His schools would be protected and that they would be appropriately notified prior to site access, either for, um, construction or installation and then, you know, eventually if we want them to dismantle, they could do that too. Schools be, uh, protected from your ability to use the building, so we want to protect that. Um, and then we also, um, know that the schools, along with the town, would have responsibility to keep that internal equipment, you know, in the electricity closet secure. And that just means, you know, not leaving the doors wide open so someone can come in and vandalize it, that kind of thing. Estimated timeline, um, you know, this could, this could all change depending on a variety of factors, but right now, we believe that, um, from now through mid-October, Select would be moving forward with structural engineering review and construction documents, doing additional pre-construction coordination with Charlie, conducting Cory and fingerprinting for everybody, including subcontractors that will be on the site. And, um, then mid-October to November, Select will kind of be, um, out of town, on their own, working on constructed approvals with these different utility companies. There's all kinds of paperwork and permitting that happens off on the side. And then we'll see them kind of again in December and January. For each of these sites, there's about 2 to 3 weeks where there's actually cranes on-site installing the solar panel racks on the roofs. That's when it will be the noisiest, um, as far as users within the building. And like I said, we'll coordinate best we can with Charlie as well as, um, the principal for each location. And then that's followed by 4 to 6 weeks of electrician work, and that's very quiet. Um, you know, just literally wiring pieces together, um, up on the roof or indoors. And then there will be another couple of months of final paperwork that has to happen with utility companies to get everything up on, on the grid, working well, and the system is fully powered up. I'm going to stop sharing so I can see everybody, and that is the end of my presentation, and I'm glad to take Q and A.
And Kara, I believe you presented to Capitol Subcommittee, did you not?
Yes, and, um, what Helen asked, many asked for, including Helen, is that we figure out a way to have the data that, um, we will have access to. We'll have daily data, um, from the roof of how the, um, how much electricity is being produced on each site. And we will have that, um, we will have that data. We can work with the school principal, as well as with the town's IT department, so that that data scrolls through however the principal thinks is the most useful. Um, you know, depending on what curriculum's going on, we can, we can show that graphically and, and a lot of different fun ways. And, um, Select from, sorry, Matt Shortslee from Select has also offered to, you know, be part of a presentation or anything else, um, just one-on-one with the school principals.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe the Subcommittee, uh, recommended that this come to the committee, the full committee for a vote of yes, a yes vote.
I see Susan nodding her head. I, I couldn't count, I couldn't figure out who was voting, but Susan says yes.
I did, I absolutely did not hear anyone oppose to it. And, I mean, Kara, this is such a labor of love. We are so indebted to you. I'm old enough to remember the first conversations, which had to have been 18 years ago. Um, so thank you for making this happen. It's very exciting. Um, and as long as you're coordinating with the principals, because obviously this is a little bit of a crazy time, um, being outdoors, indoors, and, and noise-wise, and open windows and all that sort of thing, um, in our buildings. And as long as there's some, we also, a lot of parents who I think are very happy to help with the, um, data piece. Um, so, um, if we can, um, set you up with that, that, um, might, uh, help grease the skids a little bit, make it a little bit easier, um, so we can connect offline. But thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. It's, it has been a long time, but we hope to get a vote tonight and then move on to installation.
So let's see, do we have a motion and then we, and a second, and then we can have a conversation about it? Someone went to, I think the motion helped me, Kara, with this. authorize the school committee chair to sign on behalf of the Public Schools of Brookline as host access manager related to power purchase agreements and related to documents with the solar energy development?
Yeah, yeah, and maybe just add the four properties, um.
Okay. Related to installing and maintaining solar panels for up to 20 years at the following properties. 115 Reno Street, 46 and 60 Tappan Street, 345 Harvard Street, and 50 Drew Street. Uh, I, I will move that. Is there a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Barbara. And, uh, so it's open for discussion. Any questions, comments, concerns before we vote? Mariah?
I just have a couple of questions. I, I had to leave Capitol early before, um, I heard Kara's presentation the other day. So I apologize for that. Um, and I'm sure these are all easily answerable. I just wanted to, um, confirm. And I didn't get a chance, although I skimmed the document twice, I didn't see this. Who pays for the, um, who would pay for the, any damage to the roof or if the panels were damaged because of whatever? Who, who pays for any damage associated with that?
So there's a, um, it basically comes down to the whatever, defining the whatever. So, and that sounds silly, but there's, we've talked about this a lot with John Bukke and Matt. So, um, if it's, you know, due to weather, something like that, that's going to be something that's covered under insurance that Select is, um, taking out. However, if, you know, our roof contractors are up there and do something silly and, you know, step backwards into a solar panel, that would be on us. So there, there is detailed language in the contract trying to tease that out. But basically, we're, we're both agreeing not to, um, try to damage it and then depending on what happens. You know, another thing that could happen is, say there's some crazy weather, you know, microburst and a small branch pierces the roof, right? We may need to take off the solar equipment in order to fix the roof and then put the equipment back on. So those are all things that we hope won't happen, that, that the contract, um, pieces through how that would work.
Okay, and then my next question was just, is the, um, given that the addresses that Suzanne listed don't specify where on the rooftops the panels are placed, are those, um, maps, or not maps, but you know what I mean? The diagrams that you showed incorporated by reference into the document?
They are included by, as exhibits into the document.
Okay. And then, um, I guess I, I, I want to sort of, Su- Susan mentioned this too, but like, the extent of, by which the outdoor space is going to be impinged upon in December and January and how that's going to be managed. And if principals really will have the ability at that point, if something's really not going to be working for the school function. I mean, I can just imagine having cranes on the property and whatever else perhaps being very disruptive when we need as much outdoor space and time as we can get. So just how, how is that going to be? Are principals really going to be able to stop it at that point, or is it scheduled and then the horse is out of the barn?
Uh, I don't have a specific answer on that. Select, you know, has made clear, as we've been talking to them, that they have a responsibility with their, um, investors to move forward as quickly as possible. Um, there's especially an incentive for them, um, to have construction up and going, substantially up and going by the end of December in order to take advantage of some tax breaks. But Charlie, I, as we understand the contract together, um, Charlie will be the brunt, you know, of that and juggling, just like he does with any contractor or subcontractor that comes to school properties. Um, there's obviously a lot going on with the tents, I understand, and, you know, what's going to be used for, for what? If we were to say to Select, you can't come on site, we're not going to let you come for 3 months. I could imagine some legal concern. But they so far have been giving us examples of how they've moved, you know, timeframes around. Even they can move things around at different schools. One of the advantages of doing all these sites together is they can mobilize and then kind of adjust as things are happening at different school sites. So that gives us some wiggle room.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess the other thing I would ask Kara is that I, I assume that the, the roofs where these panels are going are in good shape. I mean, that, so that, I mean, if you have to replace the roof or fix it in some way, you have to take the panels off, and that's, that's a big effort, so.
That's right. There, I mean, there's always a chance of, like I said, something crazy happening and a roof repair needed, but, for example, the Heath School was one that we have kind of the early preliminary studies for, that we feel comfortable moving forward with. Except we, the, we, the town and schools aren't ready to do that yet because we know that we want to replace the roof, um, in the near future. So it doesn't make sense for us to move forward with a 7 to 20-year contract when we know we want to replace that roof sooner than later.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise we'll vote. Okay, we'll go ahead then. Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, and thank you, Kara.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you, Kara, and we look forward to seeing those panels.
Thank you very much. Good luck with everything else.
Thanks, we could use it.
Good night.
Good night. Jim, I think, uh, a lot of your crew are up on learning expectations. Does that sound right?
Yeah, sure is. Michelle has done a lot of work collecting information and has been working, in fact, the last few months, pulling all of this together. So, uh, she's going to give us an overview of the academic program expectations across the district as we move forward here. You ready, Michelle?
I am. Let me just get the, um, PowerPoint up. And have to get rid of myself so I can present. Okay, I'm going to start by saying, um, Suzanne, you said something before that really struck me. And you said, um, talking, hearing about the new staff brought some normalcy, and I feel that way about talking about the curriculum tonight. So it's really, it feels normal, although sitting at my dining room table, to talk about, um, teaching and learning. So I'm going to talk to you about the 2021 core academic curriculum. And the reason I'm talking about it as 2021 is, um, as a result of the, um, spring, we do need to make some shifts in our core academic program, and I'll talk about that a little bit and how we got there. We're also going to talk about the grading and attendance for this coming year. So as I, whoops. Yeah, let's try it again. As I move into this slide, I want to tell you, talk to you a little about the considerations that we made in working on our core academic curriculum for the year. There is some research on COVID's impact on students, and I'm going to share that with you in a moment. Um, we had to take into consideration what our current Brookline curriculum looks like. There's DESI guidance out there, and then thinking about our learning models, because we are going to have students who are going to be in school, we're going to have students who are going to be fully remote, and we're going to have students that are hybrid. And we want to make sure, um, as part of our equity, that we are giving all students the same opportunities in learning. So the first thing I want to share with you is some research from NWEA. And this research is coming out, they've been doing the work since August, I mean, since, sorry, since April. And I just want to point out a few things here. So I know you see that on the right, it says, "Math research indicates students will return in the fall having retained only 50% of the previous con, year content." Now that, there is a big caveat to that. So when you look at the, this graph, which is grades 3 through, through 8, and let me see if I can grab the pointer. I can. So there are a couple of lines here. There is a teeny tiny dotted line here, and that they call the COVID slide. That is as if students had had absolutely no instruction after March 13th. Then they have the COVID slowdown, which is what happened for students who had instruction since March 13th. So Brookline students would fall within here. And then this is your normal curve. And then this is your normal curve with your summer loss. So this 50% is the full COVID slide. Our students should be within this line, which in most grades shows that they end up even about where they would with general regular summer slide. And this is the math graph, and then this is the ELA one. Now, ELA, the research is showing that there's a lot more retention of ELA skills than there will be of math skills. And there's a lot of reasons for that. But it's something that we need to, both of these are things we need to take into consideration as we look at our curriculum for the fall. So as I move in, I put this quote in for a reason. One of the things that's super important is that all students have access to grade level curriculum. This is an equity piece, and it means that all students have high expectations and are going for the same goals. The piece that might be different is how long it takes them to get there, the way in which it's presented to them, or their own structures that they may need to enhance their learning. But the idea is, and this is where we talk about our win blocks, is that students in general have their general education. All students have the same opportunities. And then those opportunities are supplemented in our win blocks, what I need. And one of the things, the reasons that I put that here is to talk about how that's the time where we address some of these skills that are not as present for students because of COVID. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and show how we put in time for that as we look at our curriculum for this year. So that brings us to where we start. So I want to remind people, our curriculum always starts with the Massachusetts frameworks. And this is just the cover from the math frameworks. What has been pushed very hard in much of the research and through our DESI guidelines, et cetera, is that we have to determine a focus for the year, that we are not just going to go forward with our standard curriculum and every standard that we were looking at for this year. Because we need to give students the opportunity to backfill some gaps, but to also get consistent grade level content. So what we did was we've built our backbone for our curriculum. So if you think of it like the spine that's going to hold everything up, or the spine of a book that holds everything in. So what our curriculum is, is a selected subset of the total list of grade-specific and core, and course-specific standards. It tells us what students must be able to know and do by the end of the year. And it represents competencies so that teachers can support that for students as they're working. So this is the what of the learning. This is the how we got there. So in terms of determining focus standards, we needed to help ourselves by looking at what are skills and for students that are lasting beyond one grade or course? Things that they need for long term? We needed things, we needed to identify the skills that are leveraged, so they cross over application. So they may cross into other content areas, interdisciplinary connections. We also need to prepare our students for the readiness for the next grade level. So we needed to identify the prerequisite skills. The identifying of those prerequisite skills will also help us backfill for the grade before. So when we look at the third grade, the fourth grade prerequisite skills, we're making sure that we're including those in the third grade standards. So what we've done is, when I talk about the spine, we have these big ideas of common learning priorities. And right here, I have September through December. So we are going to release these to families in two batches. We're going to do September through December and then December through the end of the year. That gives us the opportunity to look at student work, think about how students are progressing, and determine if our, if we've got the timing right in order to support curriculum through the year, do we need to accelerate and add more? Do we need to slow down? So this is a really important chunk, chunking idea that we've decided to put in place. The next piece is, so parents will see this map. And this, we're trying to post this on Monday to our website. The next piece is also to ensure that all students across the district are getting this common set of curriculum standards, skills, et cetera. So this is a third grade example. I promised Matt that I would make sure to tell you that this is not the entire third grade from September to December, that it was too much to put on the slide, there is one more unit of study here. But all students will be following these big ideas and priorities in these maps. So this is a third grade math example, and this will also be released. In addition, there's a third grade science example. So as you look at third graders across the district, we're going to all be looking at what it means to be a scientist and student in a hybrid and remote learning environment. And then we'll be looking at these big ideas of how do animals survive in different places? All of these ideas lead right back to the Massachusetts frameworks, and we have determined that these are the highest leverage standards for the work. Assessment. So we think of this as tools for assessing student needs. So all the teachers, this in the past, how many days have we been here? I think today was day six. The teachers have been attending SEL Universal Screener sessions, where they're looking at how do they understand the social emotional needs that students are coming back with? We are hoping that this data that we are collecting through the Universal Screener will also help connect to multiple factors that are impacting student learning. Our curriculum have embedded assessments that teachers are using on a regular basis to assess student learning and determine how students are progressing towards mastery of content. Running records. In the moment assessments. Teachers can do thumbs up, thumbs down, or they can use whiteboards. There are multiple things, especially with the technology and being in a remote setting. There are multiple online resources that they can use to assess how students are doing. And attendance and engagement. And this is a difference, this is a new piece that came different since the spring. We are going to be looking at student attendance and engagement, and it's going to be a regular piece of our students' part of the learning. These tools will be used to determine students' progress and their needs for intervention. So this work will help us backfill skills that students may have missed during the spring remote learning. Feedback and grading. So as usual, this should not be different than our usual practices. All students will receive regular feedback from teachers. It can be in grades, it can be in written comments, it can come through conferencing. There are multiple ways, and too many to put on this list, that students will receive feedback and understand how their learning is progressing. Our report card system. Grades K through five will still receive their two reports through the years, throughout the year. Those reports will determine, will define specific progress by standard and skill. Grade six through 12 will still receive their four progress reports and their four report cards. So the final thing that I just want to talk about just before attendance is that as I'm talking, I'm telling you that this is our 2021 curriculum, and that it's really focused so that we can make sure that we meet the students' needs for last year. Throughout this year, we will also be working to identify the full curriculum so that when we're back in a year from now, we will have the full curriculum that will be all grade level and include as, all of the standards for the 2120, the 2122 school year. And the final thing I want to just talk about is attendance. Students are going to be recorded attendance daily. It's required for the Massachusetts Department Education. Our new requirement is that attendance markers are go beyond just present and not present. We're going to be able to identify whether students are present in remote, present in hybrid, absent in person. And this, all of this information will continue to be recorded in the Aspen Student Information System. So I'm going to escape out of this and, let me stop sharing. And I am not sure, am I passing it directly to Anthony and how for them to talk about the high school piece?
Yeah, Jim, what are you thinking? Should we?
What do you want to?
I don't know if we want to pause here and just ask some questions. We want to be sure and give everybody enough time. Why don't we, why don't we do that? Why don't we just see if there's some comments or questions from everybody, and then we'll go to the high school, if that's okay?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Who would like to go first?
If I may jump in, I have a quick question. So regarding, regarding attendance, so you're saying that you're going to have a way to track whether people are present even if they're in the Remote Learning Academy?
Yeah.
How do you know for sure whether someone's actually actively participating as opposed to logged in but not really there?
So I think that's the expectations that are set by teachers, for students to be showing their faces and to be part of the conversation. Any academic conversation should include more than just a teacher speaking. I think it includes students in breakout rooms, students working together, students adding to a chat. So there are multiple indicators for student engagement.
I also just want to say with the Remote Learning Academy, teachers are going to be checking in with students and have FaceTime with them every day and constantly throughout the day. There may be times where students are offline working on a project, but they'll be checking back in. So our teachers are going to be very engaged with children every single day, multiple times.
Thank you. Who else? Jennifer, and then Susan.
I think that under the current model that we're opening with, I think it'll, you know, the attendance is fairly straightforward. I guess my question, and we may not have an answer for that right now because we're not, we're not at that, but in a hybrid model, when there are remote days, I think that's when attendance is a little bit more challenging to document. So I don't know if we're thinking about what that might look like just for future planning because we're not, we don't need that right now. That was just something I was thinking.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Susan?
So thank you so much. I know there's so much work that's going into this. I have nine questions. I've narrowed it down from the 37. I don't expect answers to all of them right now, but I want to at least put them out there. So if there aren't answers, that's okay, just let us know when there might be. So the first question was just about the idea of picking a selected subset of skills. But the first question is sort of, sort of the when will kids catch up question? Is the idea for 2122 to give them a year and a half of instruction in 2122? Or are they just not going to catch up? Or tell us a little bit about how that's going to work.
So, so when you pick priority standards, it gets a little more complicated than just looking at those three indicators. One of the things that you look at is what are other things that are embedded in it that will bring you to that standard? So the instruction is there, but that standard at the highest level is your goal. And kids wouldn't be able to reach that standard without having the underlying skills. The issue is that if we put all the standards out in front of people as those standards and skills, it's unattainable. But if we are intentional about certain standards and we do the supporting skills underneath, students will get significantly more instruct, more skill level out of it. And so the idea is that we might not hit every single standard this year, but we are going to work very hard to instruct to the ones that are at the grade level. The other thing is, when you think about backfilling, that's the what I need. Because some students, they may not need backfill, and others that do need the opportunity to have it. And so it's, so it's this sort of like puzzle. And every time we go to teach a unit, we talk about what are those standards students need to come in with from the unit? So that we might start by assessing those first and determining if students have it.
Got it. And so are there pretests that we're trying to build in?
So I wouldn't call them pretests. There are tests within some of our, there's assessment, I'm going to call them assessment, temp checks within a lot of our curriculum that allow for teachers to do it and to look at skills. There are some just in the moment things that teachers can do in the minute, in the moment to identify whether students are missing a particular skill that will keep them from obtaining a particular standard.
Okay. Because we also know that the curriculum, even during the best of times, kind of wasn't enough for certain kids. And so how are we thinking about differentiation for the kids who are, again, either at a pretest or some other way to itself, kind of already at the next level?
That's a great question. So one of the nice things that's been happening this summer is teachers planning together to look at that and to identify what are the different layers within instruction that we can use to support students? So what's the entry point for students and what can go beyond? We actually have an advantage by being remote, for students to be able to be completing things in different formats. And students who would be, take the next, I'm not going to call it the next level, but who would need a challenge or to dig into some more content, have that opportunity.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that when people see those maps, if they, if their initial reaction is, but my kid already knows all of that, there's either one of, there are different reactions. We can either say, well, here's how we're going to go deeper, here's how we're going to expand horizontally. I just think it's important for us to have a consistent message across our LA and hybrid of just how that will happen for the kids who are kind of ready for that next level of challenge. I'll sort of move through, move through a little bit quicker. The SEL Universal Screener, I think there's been a lot of conversation about that. When will it happen? How is it going to work? And specifically, like, what are we going to do with the information we get back on it? And how are we on the school side going to, you know, operationalize it? Meaning track it and put it in the mix with everything else we know from guidance counselors and the other support? So like, what, kind of how is it going to work? And what do we want it to accomplish?
Yeah, I can take that question. So I don't know the exact dates of when they're coming out. I do know that Maria sent email, an email out to all the families about it. But I don't know the exact details. But in terms of how we will use the information, so we were lucky enough to be one of the districts that has access to a dashboard that makes it pretty easy to collect the information from a teacher's perspective on my entire class based on the particular social emotional competencies that we're measuring. From there, teachers will get PD on how to incorporate instructional strategies into the academic lessons, actually, but also non-academic times, too, to build those social emotional competencies that they know need building, either targeting certain students and the whole group, too.
So I think there was some question about, like, will the, what information are we going to be asking that's tied to a student so that the educational team knows for any given student what to do and which ones are going to be more anonymous? And kind of how are we, how are we thinking about that? I think that was another piece of the conversation that I know has come up.
I'm not sure I understand your question. What kind of questions we're asking? Do you mean on the survey or that, let's say, staff would ask after that?
No, no, I mean, like, on a consistent basis across the district. Because I know that some things that we're collecting are tied to a student and others are sort of, you know, so that we can work with that student on their, on their challenges. But I think the others are just, they're more anonymous and we're not actually tracking who is filling it out. We're just getting more temperature check sorts of information.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I don't know as deeply as Maria and her team when they're working, you know, since they've been working on it. I do know that they are trying to go deeper than temperature checks. So I'm sure they'd be happy to come back and explain a little bit more in depth.
Okay, perfect. Then the last set of questions is around sort of how feedback is going to be working. This is a place, sort of feedback, not grades so much, but like written comments, progress reports. This is sort of a place of a lot of variation over the course of the spring. So I know that's been a topic of conversation. Can you just share a little bit about how we're, like, hoping to more level set or get some more consistency about the kind of feedback, engagement, and comments that the students will be receiving?
Yeah, I think this is an ongoing process. And feedback is probably one of the most difficult parts of teaching, challenging no matter what, what you do. I mean, it's always hard to do. So I think we have to acknowledge that. However, our three LMS systems are built for this. This is why we've identified them. So within Seesaw, within Google Classroom, within Canvas, one of the things that's a key feature of all of them is the way you can provide feedback to students, the way students can provide feedback to each other. In Canvas, you can, there is a grading system you can use. So we have the tools, and it's just about making sure that people know and have the skills to use the tools. And that's on us to do that technical work with them. And I think it's going to continue through the fall.
I also just wanted to say that part of our Office of Teaching and Learning work plan has been to revisit the report cards because we recognize that in interviewing our parents, especially our kindergarten parents, it was like getting a 10-page transcript that was difficult for parents to navigate because it was a lot of educational. because it was a lot of educational issues. And it's not to say that our parents can't do that, but we want this to be useful information. So as part of our work plan, we have had that now that I, well now, as we know, change, as we were told, changes is often, it's on a daily basis. But it's been a plan. And so if we can level out a little bit this year as we move forward, that's got to be one of the things we do. Because, you know, that, how we reflect student learning and, and engagement and, you know, what they know and can do is really important so parents can see and have a record of that.
Okay. So last question, and I think it sort of ties a number of these pieces together. I think when we talk about parent communication, I think a few of these things are really important to figure out how to communicate to parents because obviously there always has been and always will be, you know, variation among teachers and different styles and different, you know, different approaches. But I do think that there's something about sort of the differentiation question that, you know, how, how do I know my kid is getting, you know, challenged? And how do I know they're not getting too challenged? How do I know that they're getting challenged enough? So I think there's just a communication piece about that, and it might be at a grade level. So it might be grade level meetings at each building. I'm not really sure how. But I think that's been like a really big question this past spring. And so just some way to communicate to parents the thoughtfulness that's gone into this and sort of what they should expect. I think similarly about, we've gotten a lot of questions about supervision and evaluation of teachers, of educators this, this, this year, because, you know, obviously it was not a part of the spring. And so again, I think it just gets back to helping, you know, set parent expectations for what they should expect to be consistent and what they should expect might be different. So I do think that grade level maps are absolutely, they're fantastic. And I think they're definitely the first sort of step there. I think the next, just as, we should just need to think about the communication piece so that we can help parents calibrate expectations. And it doesn't become a frenzy, I think, of, you know, what's your kid getting? What's my kid getting? That's just unproductive for everyone.
And I think a lot of that will come from our work with teachers and having them inform that. I, I, this was all informed by teachers as well. We had small groups of teachers that were working with our coordinators this summer to, to look at this work and to give feedback. And, and the reason that they haven't posted yet is we've even been taking feedback right this week because we've had teachers with us. We had breakout groups at every grade level this week with the contact coordinators. And we felt it was really important for teachers to be having that, you know, having that conversation around, around the work. And, you know, they may not look at this document directly, but they, the coordinators are providing them with the units of study in these particular standards. And so I, I think we do, we, we need to have teachers help inform the work of communication.
Thank you. Barbara?
I have, I have a question about the Remote Academy. If I'm, if I'm a teacher with children in the classroom, clearly sometimes a lot of those children aren't paying attention. But I am the teacher there. I can draw them back. I can set the limits. I can see that they are not wandering around the room doing things that have nothing to do with the lesson. When you think about the Remote Academy and possibly particularly with younger children, but not necessarily, it's much harder to assure that the students will be with you as you are teaching a particular lesson or having a discussion group. And I think if I understood correctly in the fall, this was one of the problems that people had that parents felt that they needed to be there to make sure kids were really paying attention. And I'm wondering what, how we are thinking about this? Because it's one thing if a child buys into it and they want to do it and the parents want them to be in the Remote Academy. But a lot of children, it seems to me, might really prefer to be in school because that's where most of their friends are. And so they're not necessarily going to be open to learning everything online, at least for part of the year. And I'm wondering how we are thinking about more than interacting with children? Because I, I, I think the teachers know how to interact with children. But how are we dealing with parents in situations where it doesn't seem to be working with their students? Are we going to say you need to come back into the regular school system? How, how are we just dealing with that issue?
I think that is such an important issue. And actually, I've been communicating back and forth with parents online about this. I had a parent email me yesterday who has four children at home and she's trying to coordinate the learning of four children, one of whom has attentional issues. And one of the things that we're doing as a Remote Academy is we're sending out tips and strategies. I have to just, you know, put out that as a liaison to Expert Panel One, our, I mean, our expert panels have been just phenomenal. And Expert Panel One has put together some amazing materials that have been already vetted with our senior leadership team. And we're figuring out how we're going to get these tips and strategies out to parents because parents with younger children at home are such essential partners. So what I, what I've been doing is I've sent out a top ten tip sheet for remote learning just to get our parents thinking about how to organize a space, how to make sure that we're taking breaks with our kids and doing movement so they can clear their brains to come back and be ready for more learning. How are we making learning fun and organizing fun? One of the strategies I gave this parent was go to the dollar store with your children and pick out, you know, a three-ring binder with some, with some separators and help them stay organized. Even though they're going to be submitting some assignments online, this is a great executive functioning skill. And so yesterday's tip was sending out executive functioning, which I have to reload because someone, I think, erased it by accident. I shared the link with our Remote Academy parents. But I think part of our work this year is to support our parents with these strategies and assure them they can do this. And I think Expert Panel One has a number of great ideas to engage parents, to support parents. And as a district, we're trying to figure out how do we use the resources we have, like our website, like a parent corner, like learning hubs, to sort of bring this information together in an easy way for parents to know and learn. I think in terms of whether or not this is working for children, I think, you know, some parents I've spoken to, it is no other choice because they have kids that have gotten organ transplants. So they're not coming back to school anytime soon. So it's incumbent upon us to make this work and to support parents. And I think the Remote Learning Academy, I have to say, has a phenomenal amount of talent that has indicated an interest in being part. Our teachers are phenomenal and they're so, they're already, they're already starting to kind of network with one another and think about how are we going to welcome kids? And, you know, all of this is still very much up in the air as we know because union negotiations aren't finished yet. But we have a school to open by September sixteenth. And we want to make sure our parents know, have the support and understand how they can reach out.
What, what happens if you do all of this and for particular children, it still is not working? Do we say, and, and it may, clearly if they have had major health issues, there's not much you can do. I mean, you could continue to work on it, but will we tell the, say, say to the parents, these children need to be in a different environment?
Well, I think to the point Casey spoke about earlier, we've already identified, we have a first identification of cohort of children that we feel and students that need to be back in school. And I think that we have child study teams that's going to be no different at the Remote Learning Academy where we carefully monitor how children are doing. So I think that between the structures that we have set up to carefully track our students and to reassure our parents that our eyes are on them and the supports are there for them, I think that we're going to employ those, those resources as well and, and engage with the Office of Student Support, which we've really been partnering with to make sure that our children have what they need. So I think that given the structures that Brookline has in place and the resources, I think that we are going to, you know, use those to the fullest of our ability and take advantage. We have guidance counselors at home schools at the Remote Learning Academy. So we have that connection already set up so they know the families well. So I think that to the degree that we can have some control and predictability, we've really set up the structures for that.
That's good. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to jump in and then I'd love to go to the high school. There may be others who have something about this. That's fine. But so, so Michelle, I just want to bring up that if, if you followed us closely last year in Office of Teaching and Learning, we had a lot of conversations around play in kindergarten and how fluid those schedules had to be. We also had a lot of conversation about the importance of having adequate minutes for social studies and for science. It was getting kind of, they were, both subjects were losing ground, so to speak, to more reading and more math. But, but we had lots of conversations. However, we didn't resolve a lot of this. And so I'm hoping that those conversations are continuing and running through all of, of the work that you're doing now. Because I, I still think that it's, it's critical that we try to figure this out. So, you know, we can talk about it again another time, bring you back for that. But I, I just wanted to bring that up, that there was a lot of conversation last year and I, I don't feel it was resolved. And that we need to talk about that some more.
I, I agree. And I think that's part of the work in our continued curriculum development. I, we, the, we'd begun a deep dive into curriculum development right, probably right before I arrived here. And it did get stalled between COVID and, and the budget conversations last year. And so I agree and it's on our, on our radar and scheduling is on our radar. And we've been working, you know, and I think, like, I was thinking about that as Jim was reading Torrance's letter. And so I think that that's, that's going to continue to be something that we need to work on as a district and as, with teachers and principals and a team.
And just from my frame of reference, when I say what, I think of the frameworks and the guidelines and the particular skills and content. When I think of how, I, I think of ways that the teacher presents that. And so that teachers do have opportunities to present units that they've created, that they love, that they have some passion around. And so, you know, to figure out how to allow that to come in, that's the how of how you teach the what.
Correct. And the only thing that we're looking for is the common what. So that students can, I mean, students also need the flexibility, especially with going into Remote Academy and then coming back into their schools, to have had that same experience instructionally in terms of the what. The how is very much, I mean, teachers have a lot of, of flexibility for the how and we want them to have that creativity. And, and but I do think it's important to continue the conversation around the play and the instruction together.
Thank you. Mariah?
I just have a couple of questions. One of them though is, is sort of, I just want to reiterate exactly what Suzanne just said. And my concern was really sort of like the magic of why so many of us love our different teachers is because they've all sort of perfected the how and they've had years to do that in person and the how is amazing. And everyone has a different experience and they love it and it's wonderful. But this, this time, teachers are not, everyone's a first-year teacher in some respects this year, right? And so especially for these early units where they didn't go through it last spring. And so to what extent are, is there going to be opportunities for somewhat of a much more standardization or shared best practices of the how to help them? Because it's really going to be, it's about supporting the teachers as well as, it's not just creativity, it's support, right? Like there's those two things to balance against each other. And I'm really sorry, I have a three-year-old singing here. I don't know if you can hear it. A lot of Frozen Two in my house right now. So, so that's, I guess, like, I'm really thinking about that and, and how we make sure because just like those experiences can be really special, they can be really different. And, and in this, in this environment, it's really easy for them to be very uneven in the beginning. And that's not meant to be a complaint. It's just the reality of what we're going through, right? So I don't know if you even have a response to that yet, but.
I think I, I have a beginning response and I think we have a lot of work to do to get to what you're talking about. Just, just even finding your time in the schedule to do it. And I think I've heard Suzanne talk a lot about the need for teachers to have time to collaborate and I agree 100%. I think that's, that's the best PD there is out there. But one of the things that we've tried to do to get that started was to have teachers be able to meet by grade level, by content area, even, even at the K-five this week, to be able to meet with all content areas, to begin those discussions and to allow for that to happen. The curriculum coordinators are very cognizant of having universal places to store things so that people can, can be able to put lessons or they can make recommendations on like, this one went really well and this one didn't. And to, and to keep some common materials in order to do that. And I think that that's a beginning. It's the tip of the iceberg and we are going to have to look for ways to do that. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the fact that we want teachers to be able to support each other and not make their work harder.
I think that's great, having the idea of the common repository and sort of resources for people to rely on. That's great. My next question was going, just going back to the beginning, the forecast that we saw at the beginning, sort of the slopes that were referred to, I think they started in like third grade or something. So they don't even include first and second grade, but there's sort of this like, the assumption when you follow the dashed line is like, this child participated. You even said that, right? Like this child participated and we know so many kids didn't participate. And so just sort of throwing that out there, that especially the younger kids who were pre-literate or required so much more attention than their parents could give them or other kids who for a variety of reasons didn't participate, just like acknowledging that people really aren't at that flat level. They've, they've been, or they're somewhere else. And I know that's part of your assessment.
And, and I think that's why we're taking into account to really think about what is it that we want students to come away with this year? That's going to give them, you know, the best opportunities. That's our goal is to give our students the best opportunities. So.
And then the other thing, just two, two, three more little comments. One is that like the, the new curriculum, I can't remember exactly what you called them, but curriculum ideas or units or whatever those sheets were called, as a parent, and especially for people maybe who Susan was talking about who are looking for extra challenges for their kids, it might be beneficial if it's possible if to leave in some of the topical blocks that are getting dropped out because of the inability to cover it. But it lets people explore an age-appropriate topic, like knowing that that would have been there. I don't know. It's just something like, I think that it would be nice for people to be able to see what things might be available for them to explore that are age-appropriate. Then one of the things in you, we talked a little bit about this in the conversation, but I didn't really see it in the presentation. And I know the high school is doing this, is the idea of executive functioning. I believe it was Anthony and both Anthony and Hal have talked about executive functioning explicitly, like part of the academic program. And I don't, I didn't hear that at the K-to-eight level and it seems really important. And so not really, you know, I, I've said what I needed to on that, how it gets more.
I, I, yeah, my, and I'll just jump in that that is, that was sort of my error, omitting it. And then what are the things that we're doing and Casey and I are working on together to try and get some targeted executive functioning PD for teachers so that they have this, they have the understanding of the skills? And, and we have a lead that we're working on. That would happen pretty soon, but we have a lead so that we can support teachers in developing those skills with their students.
And hopefully supporting teachers in, in supporting parents and that parent home, 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 whatever it's called, homeschool connection on executive functioning. And then last comment is just again, thinking about the attendance and thinking about, I, I think I heard some comment about how, you know, do kids have their screen, their monitors on and do they look engaged? And thinking about some of the equity issues around families who are sharing multiple spaces and need some privacy in the home or audio, you know, oh, you should have your microphone on so we can talk to you. And sometimes kids can't participate in that moment, right? So how we recognize and, and make sure that those kids aren't feeling in any way neg-, or aren't being negatively impacted in any way by the realities of, of what's going on there. So, thank you.
I think we'll go to BHS and Jennifer, I'll let you start first after the BHS presentation. How's that? Okay.
All right. Thanks Suzanne. Thanks committee members. Thanks Dr. Marini and everybody. My name is Anthony Meyer. I'm the head of school at Brookline High School. I'm joined by my intrepid head, assistant head of school, Hal Mason, and by our awesome athletic director, Pete Rittenberg. I think we have two parts. The first part is to present our finalized schedule, speak to curriculum, just as Michelle did to the K-to-eights, and to discuss more specifically our approach to learning and teaching in the remote environment where the overwhelming majority of kids will begin at the high school. I just, I think, I, I want to start with two very short stories. I guess saying that, I want to have a sense of time. How long? How long do you want from the high school? So I can spin a yarn.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're okay for our schedule. So I think, you know, you probably have 20 minutes to a half hour.
Okay, that sounds great.
But that includes questions, so, but that that doesn't include the football, or the, not football, but the athletics.
Great. No football yet. That's great. So I think I'd start, my colleague from the Lawrence School, Kayla Nicholson, made a comment about MOU negotiations. And I just, I would start by saying I left last night along with two school committee members, several principals and administrators, Dr. Marini, my colleagues from the BEU, left our negotiations last night at 12:30 a.m. I didn't exactly roll out of bed, but came to to school tired, a little frustrated by all of the hard work and not as much progress as I would like. And I see that as very much shared by both parties, despite lots of care and hard work. And I found myself impatient. And that's not typical of me. I tend to try to use my impatience to my advantage in working with young people, because they require a great deal of it. And sometimes they need to see when we're short of patient patience. But I had two experiences today that just brought me renewed hope and energy. And one, Dr. Marini alluded to, and the other, he was a part of. The first was talking with Clara Galian about being our student representative. And Claire is gone now. I would just say she was nervous about what she would present and how she would present. And my advice to her and Jim's too was be yourself, be honest, that's the way to do the work that you're going to do. And so it's hard to hear that 63% of our students felt more stressed about learning in a remote environment. And she also talked about one student's comment about the institution and administration lacking compassion in some ways. And that's hard for me to hear. And yet, it's important as we begin a new school year, and it's certainly been important well before Claire and I I had this conversation about how we would gear our work in preparation for 2021. The second experience that Hal and I shared with Dr. Marini was touring very quickly our building project with our architects and supported by Skanska. And I think most people on this call know that this has been a project long in the making with B space and a search for a ninth school, which we've now found to the remote school, at least temporarily. But it just reminded me of the brick and mortar experience of school, how powerful it is, how much I miss our students. And the same thing came through in talking with Claire and just connecting with her. And so it gives me great hope as we look towards hybrid when it's appropriate, and I understand the urgency for establishing a timeline. It also reminded me how powerful it is to be in school in whatever form it is with young people. I always, since I began teaching many, many years ago, have hated that joke that some educators have made in my experience about after summer vacation or after a winter vacation, they joke about school being great without the kids. There isn't anything further from the truth. And so we're excited for this year, and and I'm excited to present sort of where we are. I'd start by just talking about foundational elements to school very quickly. Oh, and I should apologize, which I did not do. Erin Cooley gave me good lead time to give primary information to the school committee and to develop a PowerPoint and provide slides. And we've just been flat out like everybody else. And so this presentation does not favor the visual learner. But Erin's done an incredible job, and that that is the lack of slides or primer for the school committee is fully on me.
I can hold my notes up to the camera, maybe, and.
I might hold mine. That's my PowerPoint right there with the old Meyer scroll. Nobody else can read it. So maybe I won't be able to. So foundational elements, pretty much right away in the summer, we said that school in 2021, based on our experience in the spring, we needed a clear firm schedule, external fa- externally facing schedule. We'll share that in a moment, how that's your cue to be ready to queue up our finalized schedule. You're on it, no surprise. We also thought regularly taking attendance every day, and you'll see that in the schedule, is incredibly important, as are grades. And just as Claire said, in all of that, so we want high expectations for kids. We know they need foundational elements. We also know we, as an institution, need to show compassion in how we're doing things and communicating well. And so I would add to the good work that Michelle offered on grading to say that Brian Poon, our dean of student support systems, led a task force to develop our grading procedures, which we'll share in our playbook with families next week. It certainly involves all teachers using Canvas, so the same as the the middle school students in our K to eights, so using the Canvas gradebook. And then the other piece that I would add, and there are more, but that we're going to do two progress reports within first quarter. We believe that as we start school, families need and students deserve more communication from the high school. And so we actually have two IPRs built in just to share information. And we've got some common practices that we're asking of our teachers. So that's terrific work that Brian Poon has led that's been, you know, he solicited feedback and involvement of coordinators, curriculum coordinators, other administrators, and certainly teachers. In terms of attendance, we also think that's incredibly important. And we we spoke a little to what Mariah asked about. Sorry, we we formed policy and really procedures, that's our domain. School committee sets policy, schools develop procedures. So we are taking attendance every day, but we're realizing that there may may be short term issues that make it hard for kids. So so, sorry, we're requiring students to show their face on Zooms. And yet, we realize that there are times where kids are going to have short term reasons for why that may be particularly difficult and maybe long term reasons. And so we're, we are developing common procedures around teach, how teachers handle that and support students. Okay, quickly, schedule. Hal, if you could pull up, we're going to have the terrific irony of the guy who didn't build the schedule, talk about the schedule.
I can't wait to hear it.
For the fun of the community. So what I should say, and I think Carol Sideman, who made a few remarks earlier, alluded to a blackboard communication we sent out this afternoon. It's a fairly comprehensive update, though I always feel like we're behind in how much we could or should be communicating. So you're looking at version 117 that Hal built this summer.
117A.
One, sorry, 117A, that's humor, if you're not sure, there at home. But so this is not our typical schedule. Usually, we have seven blocks, A through G, and they meet four times a week. We also have a Z block that Carol referenced in her opening comments, and we'll talk about Z block and those important courses and how they live on at Brookline High School, because the arts are incredibly important. But what you're noticing is that each class meets three times per week, twice for 80 minutes, once for 30 minutes. The 80 minute blocks will not be all synchronous, rather, there's a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. You then look at Wednesday, which has a series of shorter blocks that Hal initially called support blocks, and I think that's true. And teachers are going to use those for various reasons. It might be meeting with the whole class. It might be starting with the whole class and then having five students stay stay on for the whole time, but we will be taking attendance in those blocks. It's separated by that faculty collaboration, PD, and lunchtime, which gives students a break. So there's T and X blocks, which are typical, our T blocks. So our H blocks in the past have been times for our advisory or hub program. There are also time for teacher support or teachers meeting with students, particularly who need support. I'd just quickly say that having teachers take attendance is in many ways a response to a concern and complaint from the spring when office hours communicated to students in particular, very, very optional. And I think that wasn't in the best interest of kids, and I think was a source of frustration for families. As noted, we've eliminated Z block to simplify our schedule and limit the number of courses students can take. And that can be jarring news for people. Hal will speak a little to that. But we feel like carrying eight courses within the pandemic is is not the kind of balance that our students need. What else? So that's, that's where we are, I think, with our schedule. I just end in communicating what I shared with families, and that is we, there are longer blocks most days, and there are fewer blocks, in part because we're worried about Zoom fatigue or too much screen time. And so having two or three blocks made sense. Hal, I want to pause a second and see if there's anything you, the mad lab genius of the schedule, do you want to add anything to my?
Yeah, I think, I think you've hit a lot of the important points of it, you know. We wanted to look at schedule from the perspective of students and teachers. We wanted to look at it, you know, within the lens of what we learned from last year in the spring, but also what we learned from last year in September. You know, last year, as as many of you will remember, we started a brand new schedule. We went from the simpler version of a schedule that meant for, where each block meant four times over five days to a schedule that went, that where classes met seven times over 10 days with the added complexity of separate cohort schedules for the groups that were traveling from the old Lincoln School over to the high school. And in many ways, it worked really well and created a a really great experience for the OLS kids, that the class of 2023 that was over at OLS last year. And it it enabled us still to keep going with our schedule. At that time, when we were developing that schedule, and that also was not maybe that 117 different versions, but a lot of different versions of schedule, some people were were proposing something like this. And they were proposing it because they thought it was better for kids. They thought that having fewer classes in a given day, having fewer class meetings over the course of the week was easier for kids to manage, would allow them to focus more on classes on during the day and when they were doing their homework. And so we did look at a model like this last year. But again, as we started looking for this year for flexibility, it became apparent as we evolved through the schedules and as we evolved through the different plans, you know, as we went through the idea that we might be coming back in person with a with a narrative, with a three foot distance, as we started looking at a hybrid schedule, and as we started looking at remote, we we really came to the conclusion that it was really important to 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 make a simpler schedule for kids and for teachers, to build in long blocks between them and to incorporate things like consistent timings. So you'll notice, of course, that this, that first block meets at the same time every day, Wednesday being the exception to all of this. And the second block meets at the same time. And this points back to Mariah's idea of executive function. You know, this unified time is much easier for a lot of kids and and for teachers as well. And really helps people remember where they're supposed to be at a given time. So it helps to reinforce some of that of structure that is missing without the context of high school. You know, so much of what kids get, kids don't need to necessarily remember what a schedule is when they're around their peers, because they're in a classroom and everybody gets up and walks out, and the kid who isn't even paying attention realizes, oh, I guess class is over, and they get up and walk out and follow the hallway and and maybe remember where they're supposed to go. When you're sitting at home on a Zoom, okay, your first Zoom has ended, but not every kid is so hyper scheduled and has a schedule, a calendar linked, you know, the Google Calendar linked to their next Zoom call and may not know from day to day on a variable schedule when time is meeting. So we we quickly decided, or or we evolved into this idea that we had to come up with a schedule that was consistent in timing. And again, this schedule, we think, allows us a lot of flexibility. It's the first schedule, or it's it's a later iteration of the first schedule we came up with that allowed us to think, this is a schedule that will work in the remote world. And when we return to a hybrid world, this schedule will work as well. And it builds in some of the things that we know will be necessary in the, if, when we become go to a hybrid model. It builds in long breaks between classes, which allow for mask breaks. It allows for kids to get outside. It allows for kids to to take some more time, and it allows for us to space out things like bathrooms and space out hallways, so nobody's rushing from class to class. It allows us to to put kids on longer routing around the building when necessary to go from place, from one place to another. And I think it also allows us to to have a a schedule where there's for for students that don't have a full scheduled seven block day, it allows us to space out the drop off and pickup time or the 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 entry and dismissal time for everybody, which, again, we think is going to be really important. We don't want to dis, you know, we don't want to do our job, keep kids separated all day, and then discharge 2,000 students onto Greeno Street. If you spend some time around teenagers, you're going to realize that that's going to be the challenge point of when you're going to be able to keep kids separated, because we can keep them separated in a classroom with desks. We can keep them celebrating in the hallway by walking around and occasionally wagging a finger at them, or maybe the, that'll become a self policing type thing, ideally with kids. But then they're going to leave. And if we put 2,000 kids out at once, it's going to encourage, we would imagine, poor, poorer social distancing. So this helps us spread out quite a bit by having some fewer classes, let's say, A or E. It it means that some kids, they will start during B block, and some kids will finish after C block and be done, and it allows us to to do a little bit of spacing there. So these are, you know, this is about 12% of what we went, of what went into developing this schedule and all the factors that we had in multiple conversations with coordinators about and teachers, what about what would work effectively in a schedule. So but we we were pretty happy with where this had landed. Again, because it leaves us with that flexibility, that's going to be so important for us, because, you know, if you had told me, you know, I I'm assuming that by, what's today, the the 10th, by October 10th, there'll be some other factors that will have changed, and we're going to need to pivot somehow in some way, and we believe this schedule allows us that type of flexibility. And, you know, if I can turn then from the schedule, and of course, we'll take questions on that in a little while, to curriculum. Now, I know Helen had asked at the last meeting for some detailed notes on curriculum. I know she's not here now, so so maybe Jennifer, if you want to set up a subcommittee meeting for us, and I could sit with you, Susan, Barbara, and Helen, I can go through all the different changes that we've made. It's, it's it's a decent number of changes that we're making, all with the same idea, all with this, again, this notion of flexibility and simplicity. So I'll just give you a couple of examples, and and then I think in curriculum subcommittee, it's probably more appropriate for us to go through some of the specifics.
Hal, sorry, do you mind, can I just insert one thing before your excellent examples? I guess now would be a time not to say no, ideally. But sorry to interrupt your excellent.
Yeah, that's a
This is okay. We work together, everybody. I would just, I would start before Hal delves into some really important examples with an extension of what Michelle was speaking to, and that is the common curriculum approach that has been largely developed and and really good work by district leaders and K to eight principals and teachers. We've struggled to some extent with a move towards common curriculum at the high school, given our, you know, 2,000 plus kids, several different academic levels. And yet, we realize in general, and certainly in the context of COVID-19 in the spring, that there is a great deal of variance. And for families and for students, and frankly, for teachers and administrators, having common curriculum expectations is really important. And so that's something we talked about quite a bit and now is very much in action and aligned, if not perfectly aligned, largely aligned with the work that Michelle is leading with the K to eights. And so Anya S. Albarola, who was mentioned earlier, our soon to be retiring or retired, I guess she's already, well, yes, soon to be retired, Anya S. Albarola, World Language Coordinator, is leading with Brian Poon's help. Curriculum expectations in each of our subject areas. Curriculum expectations in each of our subject areas. And so these are being developed within departments as they should be led by our instructional leaders, the curriculum coordinators. And the idea is come to consensus within departments about common skill areas. And this, the, the standards guiding our curriculum choices are very similar to the ones that Michelle laid out. Standards that are leveraged in multiple content areas, ones that have endurance beyond a single year of learning, relevance in the 21st century, readiness for the next level of learning. And then we've added ones that are based on student interests. And so our hope is that we will share these with families as school or just after school opens so that, and this may be overstating it, but in some ways I see it as a pact with families to say, this is what you can expect in your child's English, science, math course. They won't be as hyper-specific as our course syllabi or our course expectations. We have loads of information in our course catalog with nearly 300 courses. But this is more a primer that says, here's what to expect. So Hal, I'll turn it over to you again. Sorry to stop you midstream. For John.
So I think it was last time we spoke about some of the contraction that we're doing and some of the narrowing that we're doing in courses. And the example I gave, I need to correct because I, it was actually not quite correct, although in, in theory it is correct. And the example I gave was the 10th grade English curriculum where we teach three different English courses, world lit, real world lit and future world lit. And I spoke about those being contracted down into essentially one course. And that's not, I was incorrect on this. I was subsequently corrected by our very able English Chair, John Andrews. We have narrowed those three offerings so that they have much more in common now. But we have kept the courses separate. And I think that really is an indication of the type of thing we're trying to do at a lot of different subjects. We're, we're making sure that we're building robust teams of teachers. You know, future world lit has, I believe, two teachers and real world lit probably has four teachers and world lit had two teachers. We didn't want to leave those, those pairs alone. If, you know, just, just in terms of flexibility, in terms of knowing that we may come to times when we need to have teachers able to support each other and work with each other and rely on teaming. You know, when we're doing a lot of asynchronous learning, a lot of the way that we're delivering instruction is changing. And, you know, and that's true even in classroom, it's changing because now we're presenting people with 80 minute blocks. And we are not expecting, and, and nobody would ever want to sit in a class with somebody going on for 80 minutes about a high school topic. Most people wouldn't want to, let's say. But so, so in, in order to support that, one of the things that is great about Brookline High is that teachers learn from each other. We don't tell teachers, you know, you must teach this and you must teach it this way. But teachers work together and they're collaborative and we are trying to increase the, the size of the collaborative groups because we know it's going to be so important. We don't know how, we don't know where, we don't know to the extent that it will be. And, and, you know, hopefully it will be minimal and hopefully disruption will be minimal and hopefully, you know, people getting sick will be minimal. But we are developing, we, we, we looked at our curriculum and said, we can do the classic Brookline High School 300 courses, go off and teach this specialized thing and teach it in your own way. I mean, believe me, teachers are still going to teach in their own way. That is not going to change. But what is changing is the notion that, you know, you're, that you're off on your own. So that, those three different types of 10th grade English are developing more of a common core. Maybe that's not the right word in this context, but more of a common understanding and common principles of what's going on and maybe even some common readings of what's going on so that they can share and support with each other. Second example I would give would be in our culinary program. We have a robust culinary program. It's a really popular program. We have, you know, culinary, we have our family and consumer science classes with the cooking classes for kids. And, you know, these are really popular and fun classes and we think a really important class for kids to be taken during a pandemic, even if they're online. You know, it's helpful for a kid to learn to do some baking. It's the stress, you know, it's a perfect type of SCL activity in a lot of ways. But it's an impossible activity for us to try to support six different types of cooking classes at a restaurant. That's just impossible. We are, we are looking at provisioning for students that need our assistance or provisioning shopping list and figuring out. We had a meeting today with our curriculum coordinator for the, for CTE, Britt Stevens, about how are we going to organize flour? Can we get packets of flour? Do we have to buy bags of flour? Can we, will we have help from the district? Will we have help from, from, from facilities to deliver this? Or are we going to have to set up drop off points for people to come pick, you know, all the minutia of it? That's not going to work if I have six different streams of things going out. So we've completely narrowed down that curriculum to a culinary exploratory program where they're going to be touching on a whole bunch of things. Because again, the important part is not whether you learn to, to cook a souffle in French baking or whether you learn to make an eggplant Parmesan in Italian cooking. That's not the importance, the important part. The important part is that you're in a class, you're having fun, you're learning something new and you're able, in this case, to turn something over to mom, dad, parents, guardians, brothers, sisters, whomever and say, look, look at this beautiful thing I baked today in class. So that narrowing, we think, is important logistically. But it's also, again, the same thing where I've got two teachers, two and a half teachers, let's say, who support that entire program. And it's important for them to be on, on the same page of the cookbook. Final example would be wellness and we're looking at a change for how we do wellness. Because, and this again, comes directly from the feedback we got from our wellness educators last year, who said in the spring, the thing that did not work was ninth grade health. That trying to go into some of these delicate topics in ninth grade health remotely just was not working. And so we said, you know what, we're not even going to try to do ninth grade health this year. We're going to put ninth graders into a wellness class and we're going to therefore take that human capital, we're going to take those FTEs and spread them out so that we're offering more wellness classes. Because again, we think this is a vital thing for everyone. Instead of having the one day a week, which would, in this new schedule, it would have worked out that my upper class people would be taking one day a week of wellness. We don't think that's a right, we don't think that's right. We think they should have two days a week. It's only for half the year. We only have so much FTE. But, you know, we believe that it's a much more coherent program for us to take all the different things. We're not going to be offering pickleball. I know that's a big disappointment to a lot of people in the community. We're not going to be offering tennis. We're not going to be offering swimming, which is a real disappointment, but obviously there, there are considerations. So once again, we've narrowed down to a lifetime activities stream, a yoga stream and a ninth grade wellness stream. And within those three, we, the teachers can work together and my, the wellness teachers are really excited about it. They were the first ones to come to me and say, okay, I need to be in my building. I need to have this type of camera because if I'm teaching yoga, I can't do it based on one of these little cameras. I need, and this little screen, I need a giant screen. I need to be able to see what I'm doing on my screen and what all my kids are doing on the screen that's next to me with a, you know, a big monitor and the ability to, to track that at the same time. And, you know, that is, I think, it's a big curriculum change. And, you know, on the flip side of this, and again, this is something definitely Jennifer, that you're going to want to press us on in subcommittee. We're, we believe this has been a great opportunity for us to push health to 10th grade. Because so many of the conversations we had last year about some of the really sensitive issues that were coming up and, and some of the misses and, and gaps of what we were able to do in health education especially, were gaps that said, you know what, ninth graders just aren't ready to have this type of conversation. But as any of you who worked in high schools will know, there's a big difference between a ninth grader and a 10th grader. Or any of you that are parents might know this as well. There's a big difference between a ninth grader and a 10th grader. So we, we look at this as an opportunity to maybe shift into a 10th grade health model, which I think is a more common model and certainly in a lot of schools in the area, that that is the, the year that they go for health. So again, we, it's all about simplicity. It's all about narrowing down some of the, of what we do in order to make it work for our staff because we really want to make sure that we're not leaving and we're not exposing people to be out on their own with a class that they have to support in a, in a whole new way. And the team approach really works better for, for so much of that.
Oh, that's awesome. I think what I, the great examples. I think I'd just quickly speak to our approach to remote learning, which is, I think rightly different than the K to eight approach that Meg is leading and working closely with K to eight principals and teams. You know, given that whatever percent, 10% or so of students and families are selecting remote learning, that those numbers are, are small or medium sized across the K to eight schools. So creating one remote learning academy for K to eight made a great deal of sense. We felt very strongly that we wanted the students who selected remote learning to be embedded in our classes. We're all, you know, overwhelmingly beginning remote. At some point we'll shift into hybrid. But our strong feeling is that our cohorts will, in hybrid will each include, so an A cohort and a B cohort will both include a percentage of remote students. And so that carries with it many, many challenges. Our faculty, so Hal is going to speak to, in a moment, to what we think is a really important way of yoking those two, you know, the, the worlds of who's in the classroom and who's learning remotely. But we felt strongly that we wanted students in the remote environment to be embedded in our classes. And that was our, sort of our overriding motivation, recognizing that we have amazing faculty members, amazing teachers. They are the heart of Brookline High School. And yet we're presenting them with a challenge of teaching in two modes at once eventually when we go hybrid. And so the question is, how do we best support them in doing that? Because we think it's the right thing for students. And in his typical fashion, Hal came up with a concept that I think we, not I think, we definitely shared with faculty over time and then experimented some within a faculty meeting today. So Hal, do you want to, I'm a little mindful of our chattiness, but let's roll on for a little bit.
Permission to keep chatting, Susan?
Yeah, can you, can you wrap it up in like five minutes if we have time for some questions?
Sure, five minutes. You got it.
Not fast talking New Yorker.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. You know, when I spoke about this last week, and I think I gave the example that we already have cameras in classrooms because where everybody's using this camera, this tiny little camera that's on there. And we believe that there were cameras out there that could support something that's a little bit more robust. And we, thanks to Dr. Marini, we, we got the right levers pushed and we were able to purchase one of these cameras. And even though it was supposed to be backward and wasn't coming for four weeks, it came in on, on Monday, I believe. And I put it to the test and today we opened our faculty meeting this morning using this camera. And it's a really interesting piece of technology that we want to make available to teachers. We're not at the place where we're saying everybody must use this and this is the only way to do it. Because again, as I was just saying, that's just not the way Brookline High teachers, that's not the way high school teachers work anywhere. But the, the level of excitement of the teachers who saw this today, and there were well over 200 staff members in this meeting, and the number of people that have subsequently emailed me saying, I want to be on the team that helps to define and helps to improve how this technology works was enormous. And, and so we're going to have a great team that's going to put it together. So it's, it's called an owl camera. It's a meeting owl. And it's just like a, a cylindrical cone with a fisheye lens at the top and the software is pretty good. The software will track and identify voices in a room and put a separate camera on that. And if you were students in my class and you had me on speaker view, so you just saw my, the, my camera, what you would be seeing is a fisheye 360 degree panorama across the top of your screen. And you would see at first one fixed view of the teacher in front of the room. But as student Anthony Myers spoke in the corner of the room, a separate window would open up within that screen showing Anthony. And if a second person began speaking on the other side of the room, another window opens up over here. So it's a way of sort of bringing the class into this type of Zoom environment. At the same time, it allows students who are in the other cohort, in that B cohort, to be right there experiencing the same thing. So they're sitting on Zoom. The students in the class, of course, are not using Zoom. They might be on computers, but they're not on a Zoom. They are just there watching what's, they're, they're engaged in the class. But they also see the other kids in their class. They see the other 10, 12 kids in the class because they're up on the screen behind them. And there, there could be some interactivity between the kids who are there on the screen and the kids in the classroom. Or it doesn't even have to be that. It could just be that those kids are there and when it's time for discussion, you know, that it's only one microphone and it's one camera. And in fact, it was funny today, several of my teachers immediately were like, oh, I have a microphone solution for that. If we use this type of mic and my music teacher and my, my performing arts set designer was immediate like, oh, where do you get you this type of mic? And with this type of mic, you'd solve problem A. So we're, like I said, we're working on it. But it's a really promising way, we think, to help integrate the, the kids who are going to mainly be asynchronous. Again, we don't think this is going to be the only way that you, you know, it's not. I think a lot of people have a mistaken notion that the only way that teaching happens is a teacher standing in front of a room teaching. And that's not the way we're looking at remote and hybrid instruction. We're looking at people that are synchronous and asynchronous. And within that 80 minute block of time, even the kids in the room at certain times are doing something that's essentially asynchronous. That they've been given something to do and they're then off doing that work. And the kids who are on the screen, the kids who are in the other cohort, who are not in the building on that Monday or Tuesday, they're also getting something to, to work on on their own or work on in small groups within the, within the capabilities of Zoom. So it was, you know, I described it to Jim last week and I was trying to sell it to him. And I said, sometimes I feel like I'm the music man trying to sell this technology because we hadn't seen it yet. And today was act five of the Music Man and the band performed beautifully. I mean, I was stunned by how good the, the picture was, the sound quality was good. It's not cheap. The units are a thousand dollars apiece. And, you know, we started advancing this, I think in July. And we're looking at how we'll get funding for this, but we think this is a real way for that time when we move into hybrid to allow teachers to expand the horizon. You know, if we had said to teachers in February, oh, you know, in a couple of months, you're just going to be teaching on Zoom, using this camera and teaching in front of a class, you know, that'll be on, on screen in front of you. The teachers would have said, that's never going to happen. That we can't do that. How are we ever going to do that? And, you know, people had difficulty with it and people, there were lots of challenges, as you know, as well as we do. But we think we're really well prepared for this world now. We think this remote world in September, that the amount of work that the teachers have done, supported by the district, supported by the, the BEF, supported by the Innovation Fund has been tremendous. And, you know, I can confidently say that the, the teaching staff at the high school is ready to provide a really good teaching experience beginning next Wednesday within the Zoom environment. And back to flexibility, when we transit, if, when we transition to the hybrid, if, when we transition back to, to full time in person, this type of technology may be a real boon beyond, or in concert with the Zoom. And let me just make one more point because we think this is a really significant point. There are a lot of Brookline High School students who will not report their absences and their illnesses accurately because they're going to say, I can't miss my AB calculus class or I can't miss my Spanish class because I've got a really good teacher. And if I'm not there, then it's just not the same thing. And so I don't want to go and do a remote Spanish class from Edgenuity and have a virtual Spanish class. Or I don't want to, I don't want to just do Khan Academy for my math. So I'm just not going to, you know, this sore throat that I'm feeling, I'm not going to report. By providing this type of device and allowing students to maintain their connection to that classroom, even though in this case it's through a camera, we think it's going to allow students the freedom to say, you know what, maybe I shouldn't be in school today. I don't know what I have. I probably, I don't have nothing. It's probably just dry throat. But you know what, maybe I shouldn't be in today. And mom and dad will be comfortable saying, you know what, that's fine. Just stay home and do your classes virtually today. And you click on the button and you're watching the class and you're, you're engaged in the class that way rather than feeling the need to deliver your, to, to be in person for learning. You know, we, this goes contrary to the, to the attendance procedures and policies that we've had in the past where there was such a high demand and pressure put on students coming in and being in class. You know, within, within a lot of limits. But that's just not the world we're in now. The world we're in now is going to be, if you don't, if something, if you're even marginally not feeling well, you need to stay out. And we need, you know, we think that this system is a, is a really good way of supporting that type of decision-making for students, for parents as we work our way through the pandemic.
Oh, that's great. I think I would just, one thing that I'd speak to, just to give voice to concern that faculty brought up our privacy issues, you know, live streaming courses. our privacy issues, you know, live streaming courses, what does that mean for kids who um are on camera? And I would say it's something we're absolutely sensitive to, that we would be communicating um with families about. Dr. Marini certainly raised that. And um as a result, I've reached out to our town council to just check in um with them to make sure that we're moving appropriately. I would also just say that in general, as we prepare for a year, a beginning of the year with a great deal of Zoom, we've established norms um for Zoom use by teachers uh in support of students. And um it's not exactly under the umbrella of executive functioning, which Mariah noted before, but it's certainly interrelated. Uh, and so I think making sure that we're establishing norms within individual classes, within meetings with deans and guidance counselors at the beginning of the year. So quickly, we uh shared in our communication to families today that in our three opening days, guidance counselors will meet um with their caseloads at each grade level on each of those days. It's an incredibly powerful um important relationship. And we want to really start with that relationship and have that um do some messaging and checking in with kids uh at the beginning uh of the year. Uh, and then also meetings with deans um at each grade level, checking in about expectations, uh attendance expectations, compassion, grades and expectations and compassion, and just the the typical messaging we do during the year uh that's different in a year like this. So the other thing I would just say is we're beginning the year with parent meetings as well. So grade level and Carol asked, Carol Seidman asked uh this in her um in her public comment and emailed me this afternoon. We will have grade level meetings um in the first couple of weeks of school. Right now, our 11th grade meeting is scheduled out a little bit and I need to understand better why that's the case. That one is not until late October. So I want to look into that, but we think it's incredibly important to check in with families as we begin the year, parents and guardians. Uh, and then to continue to use the weekly blast um to share tips. Perhaps like, you know, a high school version of what Meg was speaking to in terms of educating, informing and supporting families and hearing their feedback. Uh, I'll just say that our PTO is an incredible resource in our community. And in the madness of last spring, I did not utilize them as well as I could have. I think we we were super internally focused and we realized the power of making sure that we're communicating regularly with them, meeting with our very large executive board uh and sort of bringing people along, hearing their concerns and questions.
I think I'm going to jump in because I want to be sure we have time for questions. And you did a fabulous job telling us about so much going on at the high school. So I'm, we have about 20 minutes for questions. So uh Jennifer, I'll start with you if you have some, but not to put you on the spot. Just if you want to, go right ahead.
All right. Um, so thank you to Hal and Anthony. I have already emailed you, Hal, about setting up a curriculum subcommittee meeting just now. Um, so I'll look forward to that. I think it'd be great to to talk about um the high school curriculum in more detail.
Yeah, after negotiations, I'm free from 2:00 AM until 4:00 AM on Friday, if that works for you guys.
Well, look at the, look at the wording. It's what days might be best. Um, you know, think about that. But I am enthusiastic about it. I I appreciate your offer to do that. Um, I I really wanted to mention that I I liked that you sort of opened up after that with um talking about teamwork and how the teams um at the high school are working together because it's so essential. And I'm glad to see that the focus is is on teams and educators working together, supporting each other and learning from each other. You know, I really appreciate your conversation about the um increased wellness offerings for students. I think that's fantastic. You mentioned lifetime activity stream and there were two other ones and I couldn't jot them down. What were they?
Yoga. It it's a yoga based stream and freshmen, we'll keep the love of the a different uh set of activities for freshmen.
Okay, and I and I will circle back on the um 10th grade health and that conversation. I have that down and the rationale for that and thinking about it. Um, you know, I think in particular, we we need to think about issues that ninth graders might be facing specifically um as a transition and and, you know, social emotional stuff, all of that, and how we can offer a course that meets their needs, whatever that is. And that may be different, or maybe it's not a course, maybe maybe it's a wellness course that's different from health. I don't know. Anyways. I wanted to, you mentioned, either you or Anthony mentioned, and this is where my question come in, comes in to um a follow up on the Z block and how that would be utilized. Um, I wanted to just, and we could maybe do some of this in curriculum subcommittee, but you know, what what kinds of, I think families will be interested and and the committee as well on like what kinds of arts, music and dance we're able to offer. I really appreciated your feedback about an example of a culinary program um in CTE. So my one question, I guess, is sort of the Z block. Two, will there be opportunities embedded into the day for office hours, like a true sort of office hour time where students can seek seek us, you know, small group or or one to one kind of quick check in? And then three, I just want us to ask the question so that we can inform people who may be wondering, with the difference in the number of courses that are offered at the high school, will students have access to all the courses that they need to graduate on time?
So I'll start with the last question and yes, there'll be, you know, even though we're narrowing, we're still, we're still offering a lot of courses. And we're still offering the, you know, uh certainly senior year, we're we're very conscious of, we need to make sure that we have offerings that are attractive, that kids will need, you know, uh math, science, and of course, the English course that they will need. Uh, so yes, uh no question for the for that part. Uh, in terms of the Z block and the um arts offerings, the the offerings are the same. We're offering the same number of courses. Uh, we still have a large orchestra built. In fact, we've expanded our arts offerings for this year by expanding orchestra. We had an 80 person orchestra uh and we had that running during Z block. One of the problems with that was that it didn't allow all of our kids within the OLS cohort model to access that course to to have it. They they had drama offerings and other arts offerings that were available. Those tended to be more more available in the afternoons. But now by closing the Z block, I now have music and drama offerings throughout the day. So for the ninth graders, they'll be able to take those throughout the day. And we have, we created two orchestras. So there's a sort of a morning orchestra. And then we have a concert orchestra. And my uh very abled uh um uh orchestra teacher, who we, whose role we've expanded this year, who's FTE we increased this year, went through along with Kenny Cozel and and earmarked certain kids, saying, this kid plays this instrument, put them in concert orchestra. This kid plays that instrument, put them in the regular orchestra. This kid has been through the program for two years, put them in the advanced orchestra stream. So we've got uh, we've actually expanded the offerings. Closing Z block will have implication. I can't sugarcoat it. It's going to have some implications, it's going to have some impact on the kids. There there will be some kids who opt to take a load of seven academic classes uh and thereby say, I'm not going to do my um camaraderie class. I'm not going to do my chorus class uh that, you know, or or my concert band class that might have met previously in Z block. Those are the big three that met during Z block. So there will be some impact, but we think that's offset by the increased availability for ninth graders. And also, uh, it's not really that many kids that uh have that the schedule that's that full and would and would be ones that would say, I'm going to take the the seventh academic class rather than take the band class or the jazz class that I like or the piano uh offering that we have.
Jennifer, I might quickly speak to your uh two other questions. One was essentially that um health, um health and wellness is an incredibly important experience for ninth graders. What kind, I hear it is, what sort of, that's a gap. What are we doing about it? Um, and I would say that in the last couple of years, with the help of the BHS Innovation Fund, we've retooled our advisory program that Jim mentioned in his introduction to Jen Martin and turned it into Hub, which is much more of a powerful um way to develop community, community within the ninth grade, you know, focused on ninth grade. We also, just in generally, as a faculty and staff, have agreed to the importance of developing community and collaboration, which sound like buzzwords or sound like things that, of course, we would do. I think within the pandemic and coming back from um three months of relative school closure, we think it's incredibly important to build sort of SEL, relationship, community, collaboration within classrooms. Are all uh incredibly important. And then you had a question about office hours, um which is important too. Quickly, um the CBA still calls uh for office hours. So I think that's important to note, that we still see that as an important component. And then the second piece would be um that that Wednesday, those shorter classes are times when teachers can be focused on particular students who are struggling or make themselves available to students who might just need help or want to do work that's lightly um guided. And then the last thing, but don't tell our students yet. We're developing a protocol in which teachers, um if got, you know, I'm a longtime dean at the high school. My way of checking in with kids is to show up at their, was to show up at their classes. And when they left, to surprise them with a warm hello and then some sort of check in, whether in my office or in the hallway there. It's much harder in the world of Zoom, but we've established protocols where guidance counselors and deans can communicate with teachers so that teachers then communicate within the chat function privately with students to say, hey, I need you to hold on for a moment after class. And whether that's a check in with the teacher or boom, here comes your guidance counselor or your dean, we think that that's really important. Um, so just.
Also have with with this new schedule, the Tuesday and Friday um timings have the X block and the SEL block. And what we learned last year, especially with the uh with what we did with the OLS schedule, was that building in that second T block and uh and in this case, the second X block, built in a lot of time for kids to find teachers, built in time for kids, you know, this is when we were still in person, of course, but built in a lot of time to have that type of office hour, check in, extra help session within the context of the regular day. Uh, and even in in the virtual world, we think that that some of what will happen during that time will be that type of work with teachers. There's one thing I forgot to mention about the schedule and it's an important function. And we think it's, it it, teachers have been uh asking about this because they're really nervous, especially my hyper planners. One of the nice things about this schedule is that I can easily swap my Wednesday out for a Monday. So we have Monday holidays coming up uh this month and next month. In fact, we have multiple Monday holidays coming up over the first few months. And on those weeks where we lose uh the Monday, we're going to take the Monday schedule and run that on the Wednesday so that we still maintain a a balance between the two different cohorts.
Okay, we we're about a half hour behind, so um just to keep that in mind, that's fine. That was a lot to cover, but so try to keep your questions kind of focused and your answers kind of focused as well. Okay, Andy.
Hi, thanks. Um, yeah, I had a question, which I think Anthony might have begun to answer, or maybe he did answer, but I wanted to make sure I understood. So I, it it seems great to me that this idea of having um uh each course meet for two 80 minute blocks a week. That's how a college course might be structured and that sounds great. I'm wondering about the the short 30 minute period. Like, is, it's hard to imagine that you can get everybody there, sort of get an activity underway, get people immersed in it and then end it all after half an hour, right? So uh could you give examples of how you envision that block working? I mean, you mentioned office hours, but that's probably not all you have in mind.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question, Andy, and I probably offered an incomplete answer. I think it's been, one of our questions has been, do we try to take attendance within a 30 minute block? Because uh it moves so quickly. We we feel so strongly that we want to at least begin the school year by requiring attendance and seeing how that goes. But it could be, you know, one, uh most strongly, we believe in our teachers and their ability to use shorter periods and figure out what's going to be best for their courses and their curriculum. So it might be quickly framing uh an activity that takes 30 minutes and then have people work in breakout groups together, 20 minutes on a challenge. It might be, hey, everybody, just a reminder, we're writing this paper. Our focus is on writing a good lead. Let's look at one example and then I want you to stick around if you need help. Hal, what about some other examples that we've heard from curriculum coordinators as we develop the schedule? You're unmuted, so you're good.
Sorry, I didn't, I was, I was, I missed a question.
It's weird that I would be talking and you would ignore what I'm saying. It's like.
Very strange. I've never had that happen.
No, God, I've never had that where we've had that moment. Um, just Andy asked about the 30 minute schedule and how.
Yeah, sorry. Um, you know, it's, I I think teachers are going to you find it really useful. In fact, I don't think that they're going to be structuring 30 minute lessons. You're absolutely right. There's no way you're going to pull people in, get attendance, get people settled, start an activity and then boom, it's over. Uh, teachers used to complain when we had 50 minute blocks that there was just not quite enough time in the 50 minute block uh to do things. But we think that there's a lot of opportunity, especially in this world, where you're going to need to check in with kids, that this is the way to pull in and it's going to be, you know, we envision it being something like at the end of the the Monday 80 minute B block, where the teacher says, okay, uh students, you know, two, one, two, three, four and five, you're coming with me. Don't forget, we're doing this separate activity together. I'm going to check with your understanding, you're be sure that you're there for me on that Wednesday session in class. So we envision it that kids will get sort of pulled into that. We want kids to be there. We want kids to show up and look. And maybe there'll be some type of activity that teachers are doing. Uh, maybe it'll be a breakout room or maybe it'll be a homework help session. But we also think it's that that, you know, just the two touches a week are hard. And, you know, in some subjects, it's harder to imagine. But if you look at something like world language or math, a 30 minute check in can be very effective. A 30 minute reinforcing lesson on the like the grammar or the the whatever the the lesson was on Monday in my French class, it might be really helpful to have a 20 minute, it could be even be a 10 minute check in on that just to reinforce. Because the people that are most nervous about the schedule that we presented are my world language and my math teachers because they're like, I don't know if I'm going to have enough frequency of visits with my kids. That it's just, you know, this is something they're very concerned about. So having that check in time, having that um that that 30 minute time. Again, in some subjects, yes, you're not going to have a full developmental lesson in any subject, you can have a full developmental lesson, but you might have the skills reinforcement, you might have the practice, you might have the 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 mini lesson that will work well in 30 minutes.
Mariah, did you have something?
Yeah, first I wanted to say, um, I saw the schedule and I was like, oh. It was like the first one where you don't need like a PhD from Hal Mason University to like read it. I was like, okay, we can all follow along with this, right? So that was great. Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm getting attacked by a three year old.
Well, last year, they just, it was, it, thank God, we had our student who created the app.
Um, so a couple of quick questions, which maybe you said, but I didn't hear them. Science, science labs are happening. Yay, nay? Yay, okay, yay.
Yes. Teachers in the building filming in their chemistry labs, filming, getting, preparing themselves, getting ready so that they can just turn key and flip those lessons out to their kids.
And then is, has there been any, I can't remember the word you used, but like narrowing of leveled classes? Are we going to have full leveled classes to the same extent we typically have?
There's something certainly that we talked about, you know, we had some interest from some subjects of doing that. But in the end, we did not do that for this year. We just thought it was, you know, the the, that was just going to add too much of complexity, especially for teachers. You know, the the project that led to the leveling of ninth grade, the the WISP program in ninth grade was a really long program predicated on a on a team, predicated on a lot of support and a lot of teamwork. And, you know, that that group became very cohesive and worked well. That's going to be hard to recreate uh when they're not sitting in a staff room every B block, uh every, you know, seven days out of 10, developing uh their program.
So are you saying there's going to be like no AP Bio, AP Chem for seniors?
No, no.
I think he he answered it the opposite way, that that we've retained um the levels that we have for the most part. There certainly was interest. We have an amazing physics team that has done terrific work on a common curriculum and they are interested in um potentially having heterogeneously grouped classes. But we have retained the ninth grade honors and ninth grade standards. So we have the the same AP offerings as we have. So we have the, the same AP offerings as we have every year.
And we have expanded AP offerings this year. We have extra computer science. We have computer science and computer science A. And those are for the first time packed. Both of those classes are packed. Thanks to the great work that David Petty is doing with computer science at the high school.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, can we move to athletics and what it is we need to do with that now? Could I say?
I think we should. That's going to be a very important discussion as well. High school discussion was fascinating.
Yeah.
Makes me want to go back to school, but that's another question.
Sorry, you can only go to Hal Mason University.
I, I got that. Mariah made that very clear. I, I, I do think we should move on to the athletic program. That I, I think is on everybody's mind, probably across the state and how we're moving with that. And I know that Pete's here and really is deep into this for obvious reasons and, and has a pretty good perspective on it. So I think we should move over. Pete, you ready?
Ready. I was doing fine until Hal mentioned eggplant and I remembered I hadn't eaten dinner yet.
But you look great in front of your trophy case, that, that, the dog award that you won. I don't want to get into it, but really well done.
Creamer. I got, I got kicked out of my usual spot.
Yeah, you gotta get that right, Anthony. It's cow creamer.
Sorry, cow creamer. It looks great. Congratulations, Pete. Go ahead.
I'll send you a picture. Um, yeah. So first off, thanks, thanks for the time tonight. And thanks to the committee for the vote on August 31st that supported high school athletic participation for those of us in remote learning, which is almost everybody in the high school. I, I'd like to start with just how important, I, I want to emphasize how important athletics are at the high school to our many students and families. We have all kinds of ways of measuring that. We know that we have the largest athletic offering, largest athletic program in Massachusetts. And we know that year in and year out, somewhere between 55 and 60% of our student body is participating in at least one sport. So it's important. You know, other measures, you know, we heard earlier, things about, you know, wins and losses, winning championships, you know. Some people put more or less value on those. I would say this year we're putting zero value on that. That the real value is going to be on supporting our student athletes who, well, like all of our students, but the athletes who've lost, already lost spring seasons, you know, have been kind of isolated during summer, not having the same offerings there. So really trying to support social emotional learning, provide equity. Provide, you know, safety is obviously a huge goal for us. So I can weave in, maybe Suzanne, how much time are you picturing for this?
What do you think you need, Pete?
I, I could, well, I could go on. You have hyperlinks in the, probably some of the documents that you received. So there, there are literally hundreds of pages of recommendations. I'd like to give an overview. I can give examples of, you know, when we get to the guidelines, how some of them are arrived at. I happen to, I'm now serving on the MIA Board of Directors and I'm also the chairperson of the MIA State Track and Cross Country Committee. So I was deep into this over the summer. So, you know, I, I want to make sure I cover everything that people want to hear. And I'm, I'm sure there'll be time for questions at the end.
We would like questions. And, but Jim, could we just kind of set the expectation? The idea is that we're not voting on anything tonight, correct?
That's right. That's right. We, we are not voting on anything this evening. The, we have sufficient funds to cover F1. And this is an opportunity for the school committee to have an overview of what the athletic program is. What, what, what appears is it's going to be for the year, MIAA. And working with their sports medicine groups have been making recommendations with DESI. And the athletic directors across the state have been dealing with this. And I, I do believe they have made some decisions. The committee should just understand the overview. They squeezed in this sports season. What does that mean? And what does the athletic program look like? There are many people in the community who are wondering whether we're even going to have sports. And if we are, what sports are we going to have? And so this is an opportunity for the school committee to just get an understanding of what's the athletic program? What's this fourth season? What does it look like? When are we going to begin F1, the first season? And what sports are going to be run during that season? Then you can follow up with questions as you will. But Pete, you okay with that?
Yep, sure.
Can I just repeat what I heard? We have had hundreds of, as we always do on a topic, but this is a passionate topic for people. Hundreds of emails saying we need sports this fall. And we're just going to repeat again, Jim, you said that we are going forward. We have it in the budget for the first, whatever it is, season, the fall season.
Yes, we do. And if Mary Ellen Turner comes, she will confirm that. We already checked that out. For the first sports season, we're good to go financially.
Okay. People don't have to write us about the second because we're going to bring that up again and we're going to make it work the best we can.
That's right. We'll, we'll, we'll come back and look at the budget pieces after. Right now, we want to get the sports program off, up and running and go forward with it. And I'm sure Pete does too. So this is a great opportunity to put this whole issue in perspective, particularly right now, as we are ready for the opening.
Feed it all yours.
Okay, so just, so an overview of the summer and what went on. Coming out of the spring and pandemic and not knowing what's happening for the fall. We started looking, you know, within our league and across the state, we started looking at other states who were on earlier timelines than we were, particularly in the South and in the West. And trying to see what they were planning, what as their seasons began to unfold, what was working, what wasn't. And we were all this time waiting for the EEA guidelines. And nobody had ever heard of the EEA until about two months ago, but they are really calling a lot of shots. So we waited for their guidelines, which dropped in, in August, early August, early mid-August. And, you know, we started looking at those things. At that point in time, the Board of Directors was meeting and planning on, this would have been, yeah, this was in July, sorry. Board of Directors was meeting, getting some sense of what was happening in our state, what was happening in other states. There was a COVID task force that the MIAA convened, which included doctors, athletic directors, principals, so on, from across the state. And so we were prepped in July and, but, and we agreed to meet within 72 hours of the, of the, the DESI MIAA guidelines dropping. So that happened in mid-August. I think it was August 18th. We got a preview, met on August 19th. And that's when votes were taken to establish what, what are now four seasons of athletics. So the fall one season has all of our traditional fall sports, less football and cheerleading, which were moved to fall two, and I'll get to that a little later. But the fall, the fall two sports were predicated on risk factors that EEA had identified. So both of those sports were considered high risk due to a lot of physical contact. So those were moved. The other eight sports, including, I'm, I'm doubling up on cross country soccer with boys and girls. But eight sports that we traditionally offer were in fall one. They set a date timeframe, which would be September 18th is the earliest that it can start. And it would conclude on November 20th. And then the winter season would pick up where it normally does, the first Monday after Thanksgiving, which I believe is the 30th this year. Would go out to just about the end of February vacation, February 21st. And then this fall two, you've heard it maybe called wedge or floating season. That was put in from February 22nd to April 25th, which takes us out to about the end of April vacation. And as I mentioned, cheerleading and football were put in that by mandate, state mandate, they were put in that season. And then the spring season would pick up on April 25th. And somehow they came up with a July 3rd date, which there's been a lot of pushback on that. Cause you know, school systems, our, our years end on, on June 30th. So anyway, that's still kind of to be determined. So once though, once those seasons were established, the next step was for every sport committee. And as I mentioned, I'm, I was chair of the cross country and track committee. So every sport committee was tasked with taking the EEA regulations and making the necessary modifications so that you could get to what they called level three playing and what that meant quickly. So level one was just individual or socially distanced group activities. So you, you might think conditioning on a field with people spread out, not touching anybody, not sharing equipment. The next step, the level two is intra-team small group activities. So scrimmaging, you know, small skill groups, that type of thing. Level three is where you get to interschool or what we're called, we, we would call interscholastic. So that's what we needed to get to. Just for reference, nobody's looking at doing this anytime soon. But level four is tournaments, which is essentially multi-school events. You know, something you would typically see them in wrestling or swimming or, or track where you've got big invitationals with multiple schools. But, so we needed to get to level three. And in, in the case of cross country, we convened a subcommittee. We've had people from all over, you know, central Western Mass. We had the coaches organization who, they run a lot of those big invitationals and are, are experts in the meat management. So we had to come up with, you know, the EEA guidelines, guidelines rather, were, you know, 25 players on a field, which how does that translate into cross country? So we were able to go back and forth and determine that we could have more than 25 people on a course at any given time. But we had to make some other modifications. So what we ended up with, with some back and forth, including the sports medicine committee at the, at the MIA as well, is what you see in the guidelines. So we, we, we're limited to 10 people on a starting line in this example. Socially distanced by six feet for team members and then 14 feet for, between the teams themselves. So you need like a 62 foot starting line. There's some guidelines for finishing, guidelines for masks and wave starts. So, you know, three minute wave start type of thing. Other sport modifications you might see, if you, you know, if you look in those hyperlinks, you'll see that soccer modified so that they don't have throw-ins. They would have kick-ins essentially now. Field hockey has gone down to seven versus seven on the field at any point in time. They don't do their corners. So each sport basically took into account how to avoid what EEA was called clustering. And so what you see now, all those guidelines have been approved by, they've gone through DPH, EEA, DESI, and MIAA. And then they came to the leagues. And so I think in your materials, you'll see, once, once all those guidelines were established, the Bay State Conference came together, athletic directors, and we had a long meeting and came to some common agreements, which we believe will help further mitigate risk. So some of those agreements, we started with girls volleyball and we, we made the decision. It was ultimately supported by all of our principals in the league. We made the decision or the recommendation to the principals that girls volleyball would also be moved to fall two. And the rationale being that eight of, well, one of our schools, Framingham, is in the red. So they will not be participating at all. And seven of the other nine schools did not have gym access for various reasons. Whether, you know, gyms had been converted into classrooms, isolation rooms, you know, what, whatever. Some of the schools in hybrid did not want, were not letting outside groups in. So it became a facility issue. And so we, we made that decision, principal supported it. So that's what the Bay State Conference will be doing with girls volleyball. Girls swimming, another indoor sport. We are going to contest everything virtually. So there will be no school, no schools visiting other pools. You would swim in your own pool, trade the results, trade the performances when it's over. They could even conceivably not swim on the same day. One team could swim on Tuesday, the other team on Wednesday. Share the results and create a, you know, create a dual meet result if you want to do it out of that. We agreed not to, not to schedule any non-league opponents. So we would stay completely within our league. And further than that, we agreed to small school pods. So with nine schools. And by the way, other districts are going through the same process we're going through right now. I think, I believe Newton's got their meeting tonight. Wellesley was approved last night.
Framingham, Framingham isn't.
Framingham's out. Framingham's out, yeah. Natick and Braintree are having school committee meetings next Monday. So we don't exactly know, you know, we're hoping everybody gets to go ahead. We know Framingham's out. But everybody else, we're hoping gets to go ahead. So if we have nine schools, you know, we're looking at four and five, but possibly three and three, three groups of three pods. If we go down to eight, it's likely two pods of four. But the idea is to just limit contact, limit travel. And the further scheduling piece that we agreed to is that for the in-person sports, we believe we can set it up so that, you know, for example, Brookline, Newton, if we're in the same pod, Newton North, we would play all of our sports in the same week. And then the next week might be Wellesley and the next week after that could be Needham or Natick. And so that we're limiting contact. If we ever had to get into the contact tracing, it would make things certainly much easier. We're hoping that we're avoiding that by doing what we're doing. And then the last thing we did was we moved, we moved the first practice date. Rather than the 18th, which is a Friday and is also the beginning of Rosh Hashanah, we moved out to Monday, the 21st. So those, those are the, those are the changes we've made. We're still, you know, we're still meeting regularly and trying to adapt to whatever changing conditions, much like the schedule Hal described. We have a scheduling concept that we believe we can pivot with changing conditions. And, you know, as I mentioned, championships are not the goal this year. The MIAA removed fall championships. So our goals really are to get kids, you know, reconnected with each other. The advantage, I think, of our fall sports, with the exception of swimming, they're all outdoor sports. We think the social distancing should not be a problem. From an equity standpoint, we are very concerned that if we don't run sports, that vacuum is going to be filled by something that is going to be much less regulated and likely much less safe. And then those kids that are mixing with, you know, other communities and it just, it, it seems like that's a, that's a, you know, a more dangerous recipe for, for spreading things if we lose control of what our kids are doing and where. And then, you know, the safety piece is, is that our, our coaches. I think from what I've seen and what I've heard anecdotally, I believe that, you know, the high school regulations that we're all, you know, have been developed and we're all being held to now, they seem a lot more stringent than some of the other, some of the other things that, you know, we've heard about going on over the summer and captains practices and whatnot. So we, we just believe that it's really important that we get as much of this under our control with our kids, with our coaches. And really that's the community piece is pulling, pulling ourselves back together as best we can towards, you know, what we hope is normal sooner than later.
Thank you very much. There was a lot of information. Let's go for questions or comments. Barbara.
This is an odd comment because I know next to nothing about sports. It's been a long time since I did them or had kids that did them. But I'm not so concerned about kids who are out on the playing field. But when they're preparing to go out on the playing field and they go into the locker rooms, how are you going to deal with the social distancing piece there? I don't know that you can be sure that the kids will monitor that themselves.
No, that's a good question and I left that out. No, that's a good question, and I left that out. Um, we are not going to be using locker rooms. So the, with, with the remote learning model, um, and basically, this is what's been happening. It's in those guidelines. I, I I, I kind of glossed over it, but it's in those guidelines that um, in these earlier levels. And I think it works very well with remote learning. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's the practicality of it is they're not coming to the school necessarily, unless they're going to get on a bus to go somewhere. They would be going directly to their, I mean, as you know, most of our fields are not at the school. We have one field at the school and it's not really in great shape. So we'll be students will be going to, uh, probably going directly to practice and leaving directly from practice. And there's a whole, you know, there's a whole slew of regulations with gym bags and, you know, putting things six feet apart and not sharing water bottles, not sharing any other equipment. So it, it's really that they're in their own bubble, coming and going. And um, you know, when, when they're on the field, under the supervision of coaches, that this, the, the social distancing and the mask wearing, um, we feel will be very uh, closely regulated.
Pete, I would just add to Barbara's question. I mean, one can't help but read the Globe today and see the outbreak among the B C uh, when, women's and men's um, swim and dive team and have concerns, just like what Barbara mentioned. I think it's all the more important that we do the, the training uh, in support of our coaches and common practices and use our captains. You know, young people are powerful, captains are powerful generally in all the right ways. And so talking about how high the stakes are and how easy it is to, you know, pull, pull down your mask or run closely to one another. I mean, we, you know, kids don't always um, make great decisions, nor do adults. And I think it's all the more important that we're doing pretty robust support of our, our coaches. And that's led by Pete, in my mind. I don't know, Pete, if you want to.
And actually, uh, the National Federation has developed, so it's um, pretty new within the last a couple of months is, so they have a COVID, you know, an online free course for coach education that we'll be using. Along with, I mean, I, we had a, uh, we had a presentation by the school nurses early on in the, uh, early last week. I think it was the first day, opening day in the afternoon. And I had asked that question of Tricia, if that could be shared, adapted for coaches. And it may, it may just duplicate what the NFHS, but we have those two resources. We can use both if uh, we feel necessary. But coaches will definitely, they're already aware. I mean, everybody's aware of the stakes um, among our coaches, I know, because I've been talking with them all summer long.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Jennifer?
I had, I hesitate to even say the, what I think is probably obvious, but I also think it'll be really motivating to students and important for students to know that the more that we follow the health, health and safety benchmarks, um, the more that we can adhere to those guidelines. In likelihood, in theory, the longer we can continue to, to run sports. Um, and so I think that's another motivation for, for everyone to be on board um, with following those guidelines.
Yeah, absolutely agree. I mean, I think it goes for, it extends to spectators as well. Um, you know, that there are limits. And it, it depends on the facilities. You know, we'll have some challenges because every single one of our fields is a public park. So you know, I think the social distancing among spectators and just people understanding that you violate it, you, you know, potentially end your season, you potentially end everybody's season in the fall, you potentially end sports period for, you know, who knows how long.
Pete, I would go as far, this is your domain. I would go as far as to say that um, it should be a discussion about spectators, depending on the support or in general. And I don't want to um, discuss what other districts are doing as they're engaged in conversations with school committee. But I think that some districts and some principals and athletic directors are in discussions about um, whether there would be spectators at certain sports or at any sports. So.
I, I can share. We had those discussions and you know, it's difficult to mandate because we're all in different situations. And for us, I, I pointed out, just what I just said, is that I don't know how we'd police short of, you know, just moving people apart. Because if you're at, you know, if you're at Skyline Park or you're at uh, Downs and it's a public park, you know, how do you count dog walkers or something against your fifty people that can be in attendance? Um, other school districts are looking at, they've got stadiums, you know, typical traditional stadiums with gate control and um, maybe able to do a better job of it. But we, you know, we had, we were recommending probably two spectators per uh, per student, max. And then just hoping that, I, I don't, it's impossible to police our areas except to keep people apart.
I just wanted to repeat, will this reduce the number of cho- of students that can participate? Are there, or is it the same?
Um, we hope not, but some of the restrictions, I think it's our, it's our facilities like the pool and the golf course in the fall that I'm most concerned about because the pool's going to have restrictions on how many, I just had a meeting with them today, actually. Um, so we're working on hopefully, uh, we'll have more flexibility with time because they're not running all of their adult programs. So it may give us more time in the pool, but we still may be restricted as to how many people we can have in there at one time. Um, we wouldn't expect to have spectators at any, um, you know, any virtual contests because I think that puts us over the, the limit. Um, and then the golf courses are packed right now. They're just, and the country club is preparing for the twenty-twenty-two U S Open. So they're under construction and the Primrose part of that course that we typically use is only got six or seven holes open right now. So we can't use that. We can use it for practice, but it's, it's just, we got a lot of things working against us at the golf courses right now because um, you know, Potterham, my understanding is they're just, they're jammed up. Uh, they're giving us some time, but whether we can get everybody we want out there remains to be seen. We, we, we're committed to getting as many kids involved as we possibly can. And I can't guarantee that that will be everybody.
Do we have intramurals? I don't even know. Do we have non-inter?
There's no intramural in the budget this year.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Susan.
So first of all, as always, thank you for this. It's so much work, Pete. It's so much care and effort and logistics and health and safety and everything. So just thank you for doing this. And um, the Commonwealth is benefiting as well, but just but thank you from, from us. Um, I just want to ask one question about the budget, just so that I understand. Are we, is there enough, I understand there's enough money sort of for now? I guess what I want to make sure, we're not setting up as a situation where we kind of like fully fund things and then it sort of drops off a cliff because we don't have any more money after that. So if somebody could just give a sense of the trajectory of the year and what we think we're funding now and what we're, was what's going to get decided later? I just want to make sure that the people who are, you know, winter, spring, whatever, are not sort of disadvantaged by sort of burning through whatever we think we have to, to put it. So just help me understand how you're, how you're thinking about that.
Am I answering that? Or does Mary Ellen, I, I can start to answer it. Mary Ellen's.
I'll take, I'll take that, Pete. Um, well, we do have a, well, we do have a funding cliff. Um, um, we, but it's not only athletics. So the challenge that we have right now is um, we cut, uh, the school committee reduced um, sort of these extra uh, stipend lines by about four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So intramurals was included in that. Um, and then the principals also went through the various stipends for clubs and activities um, and have removed some that just are not practical in this current year. Um, and then we were also waiting to find out what was going to be happening with the athletics and fall sports. Um, but there were some assumptions that there would be a reduced schedule, reduced costs around the fall sports. By the committee. And so right now, we're, we are looking at some reductions um, in terms of the number of games, but the, what we weren't anticipating um, is sort of the offsetting costs with um, transportation and some of the challenges that Pete has outlined, already outlined that are sort of offsetting some savings. So um, I'm working into um, my calculations. A variety of assumptions and also um, trying to get that stipend list finalized so that um, we know exactly of that four hundred and fifty-five thousand that was cut in that other, our other, this other area in our budget. We we sort of know what's left and then we can talk to Pete about where spring and uh, winter and spring sports fall. Um, and particularly as the whole, um, you know, pandemic kind of pans itself out. Um, I do want to remind the committee that one of the structural budget changes we made for FY twenty was to move the um, coaching staff out of the revolving funds, um, but to the operating budget. So um, that is part of um, impact on the four fifty-five cut. Um, however, that doesn't preclude the revolving from, from being used for um, for all of athletic expenses. It just, Pete and I need to sit down and go through as his seasons get identified and games and practices and transportation all get identified is to basically meet season by season for a budget projection and, and quarterly projections. So we know where we're going to be and can be ahead of the um, cliff, or at least know when it's arriving.
I'd just quickly say thank you, Mary Ellen, just um, for how quickly you and Jim responded to, you know, quickly changing information and then the need to make decisions and establish whether we had funding for Fall One. So you've been hugely helpful with everything else going on. And I think Pete and I are both super indebted to you and, and our whole um, high school community and certainly the athletic community. So thank you.
Yes, second that. Um, let me just, one other date that we can keep in mind is so for, so the COVID Task Force that I mentioned earlier, uh, so they're putting together recommendations for winter. And I'm, uh, we're likely going through the same process of uh, you know, modifying guidelines and all that. So they have asked the Board of Directors uh, at their August, I'm sorry, October twenty-ninth meeting uh, to reserve time to have the discussion about winter sports. So that gives roughly a month. You know, before we're making, we're having, I guess, a similar conversation about winter sports and whatever they might look like.
Okay, so just kind of, sorry to be super stupid, but like, so we're not going to burn through all the money for the fall sports and then not have anything for fall of spring, winter's spring, right?
I, 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 I think I may uh, make a comment here, if you don't mind, Susan. With uh, with respect to the budget reductions uh, and, and, and the uncertainty, there's a whole bunch of things, Pete. My uh, my heart goes out to you in many ways, but with uh, with all the uncertainties that we're facing. And, and is there even going to be a winter season? What's going to happen in the winter? There's a lot of uncertainty, which I think is what uh, may have informed the school committee as it made its decisions last year with the uncertainty of what the sports season was going to be like. But Marion has been scrubbing the numbers uh, quite rigorously in terms of understanding that uh, there are some programs, like the sports program, that is uh, a, a community-wide uh, interest and it's, it's, it's a driver. So looking at the budgets in terms of the revolving account, is it, that money uh, is going to generate a certain amount of money? Can that be used to offset the coaches? How many sports are going to run? So there's a little uncertainty there. I would, I would suggest and, and ask the school committee that this evening is to get, to do exactly what's happening, to get an overview of the program and to reveal some of the vulnerabilities that we may be facing. And then charge us quite directly to go back and, and uh, and look at the budget implications with clarity, with absolute clarity, and to come back at another school committee meeting. And you know, uh, Pete's talking about you meet, we may, may need to make decisions, the financial decisions in about a month's time, Pete, or six weeks' time?
Uh, yep, that's probably about right. Yeah. So I, one other thing to note too is that I know, I don't know how many people are, are watching this, but if you're watching and and you're involved in a winter or spring sport, or wo- wo- uh, winter or uh, fall too, I should say, is that there is possibility in the winter case that if something weren't to run or were to start late or something like that, it could move into that fall two season as well. So there is, there is some flexibility left in what the MIA is doing. That's why, that's why some people are calling it a floating season and not really fall two. That there is a possibility that a, you know, a winter sport could move to the fall two or could even move to the spring if it, if it made sense.
So I would ask the committee respectfully to direct us, me to look at um, with the athletic department and uh, certainly with Mary Ellen, to, to look at uh, the larger picture uh, with the uncertainties that we're facing, with the uh, possibility of moving seasons and all of that. Uh, to, to come back with a, to you with a uh, recommendation on how we would go forward. Because I'm, I'm, there, there may be a, a bunch of different alternatives in there. I don't know. But it, it would require some focus on our part and would be some priority establishing and maybe even some decisions that need to be made, which of course, uh, it will be in your purview to make the decisions. But we should be able to come back to you with some clarity around what the options are and what those decisions mean and what the trade-offs are in the event that we're facing this. I, I, I think that tonight was to give you a, a, a really good sense of what's happening in the athletic program. And wh- of what the priorities or, or what the desire of the committee is to support that the program and then charging us to come back to you with some recommendations on uh, what we think uh, might work or might not work. If that, if that uh, works for the committee, then we would accept that uh, direction.
So I, I would so charge. I don't have some nods from people that I was, I don't think it's a vote, but I think so charged. I'm seeing some yeses, nods anyway. So we got thumbs up and yeses and nods. So it sounds like a good plan, Jim. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I think it'll, I think it, it will do two or three things. One, it will, it will reinforce our values and our priorities. It will clarify trade-offs that may have to be made. And it will give the committee uh, an opportunity to actually make some thoughtful, informed decisions. And Pete, you, you may be asked to come back a couple of times, Pete, because this is a moving target.
No worries.
Yeah, to give us your best judgment on that. And because you'll have enrollment, you'll have interest, you'll have uh, results from, you know, heaven forbid there are in infections that may go up and what's going to happen then. And then we don't have the season and what trade-offs are we giving? And can we redistribute that money if that should happen? The uncertainty on it is really quite extraordinary. But we should at least come back with a recommendation that the school committee can then push on. We will try to get that recommendation to you well before the meeting, so that you'll have a chance to read it, scrub it, ask questions for clarity, so that when we're at in front of the community, actually having the discussion, it, the committee is informed enough to have a discussion that is substantive and the, in the community, I, I think will appreciate uh, the focus on, on what's happening. So we accept the challenge. We accept the charge and uh, we'll put it on the agenda when we do adopt it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pete, so much for your time tonight and for all the work you're doing for, for our students.
Thanks, thanks to all of you. We're all in the same. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can go home now. Oh, you are home.
I gotta, I gotta get my creamer out.
Yeah.
For my eggplant. You bringing that over, Hal?
Okay, moving on.
I'll take a souffle.
Now, Peter, I'll, I'll drive it up in a little while.
I'll take a souffle too. All right, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mary Ellen, did you want to do extended day license agreement user fee? Did I lose Mary Ellen? Nope.
Yeah, no.
Well, you don't want to do it?
I don't actually have the, I, I didn't put that on the agenda.
Okay, we could do it next time.
Did I get tagged with it?
Yes. You did. Has your name right next to it?
That figures.
Okay, do you want to do it next time?
Yeah, because I don't even, I'm trying to just get open the, I don't know if I, I mean, I lost my school committee packet open, so. Let me find it and move on to the next item. Let me find it, review it and see what's.
Okay.
Where, where we're at with that. Sorry.
Okay, okay. Uh, David, we're moving on to, uh, policy.
All right, so starting on September eighth, we started to address four policies that pertain to the reopening of the schools. One of them is a general pandemic policy on COVID nineteen. Another is a broad remote learning policy. Another one is immunization policy and the fourth one, a face mask policy. Now, because there is an existing immunization policy and the MAS C version that I was initially working off of does not actually touch upon COVID nineteen specifically. We're going to defer further action on the immunization policy until such time that there's an opportunity that we can merge the existing one with the new one and also refine certain elements of it. So, some of Miss Tricia Laham, who is our chief nurse, she had been mentioning that some of these specifics in that immunization policy need to be brought up to date and perhaps not even explicitly mentioned because the state requirements are always changing. But the point being that we don't really have to deal with the immunization policy at this time. Similarly, the harassment policy, which initially we were going to be updating in order to bring it into compliance with changes to Title Nine. That is also something that is not quite as pressing from a times, a time sensitivity perspective. So we can revisit that as well at a subsequent meeting. That one's going to require a lot more work, is far more controversial. At the policy subcommittee meeting on the eighth, most of the public participation was in relation to the harassment policy, the procedures and the due process elements. Uh, we're going to look to merge several different drafts with the existing policy as well as incorporating, of course, what we're legally obligated to include from the statutory changes to Title Nine. So the three policies we'll be focusing on for this evening, all three of which were voted unanimously by the subcommittee at today's meeting for referral to full school committee are the general pandemic policy for COVID nineteen, the remote learning policy and the face mask policy. Now, earlier during today's full school committee meeting, I sent all of you the most updated versions. They do not depart too much from what you already had in the shared folder. But the reason why I sent that extra version out is because at today's meeting at four P M. Andy, Jennifer and others from the administration helped sort of wordsmith certain elements and we made a few important changes. Uh, and I wanted all of you to be able to have cleaner copies so that you could work from those just in case your comments on those policies were already addressed from the earlier discussions today. Just to briefly summarize what those changes are from the drafts that you may have previously reviewed. On the COVID nineteen policy, we decided to add specific language for having the superintendent come forward with specific procedures for notifying others who may have come into contact with a person who tests positive for COVID nineteen. Uh, there's a lot of concern in the community about people who want to know whether there's been, uh, whether someone's tested positive, how that might affect their child, uh, their loved one, whether it's staff or some other person who is in the building. So that's why we decided to add that language. Uh, another change. So that's about it for the COVID nineteen policy. Then moving on to the remote learning policy. The change there was we had the word client instead of students in reference to special education. So that was switched so that we refer to our special education students as students. Uh, and then the base coverings policy that had a few more changes. So in that one, there's been a spelling error for gators. So that's now been corrected. Also decided to add some language to the second paragraph. Uh, because Jennifer pointed out that we want to make sure that masks are used at school-sponsored activities, even if they are not on school grounds. So that language was added to the second paragraph. Uh, Andy also pointed out that in the paragraph about exemptions, that we should include guardians because not all of our students are living with their parents. Some are with legal guardians. So we added that language. And then finally, the other main change from the previous draft pertains to a couple of the bullet points under exceptions. Uh, so one of them that initially it said that people could decide not to have their masks on while outside. That bullet point has been eliminated completely, the one about while outside. There was also a modification to the physical education exception, which now reads certain outdoor activities in physical education classes and extracurricular activities. Uh, Andy pointed out that sometimes a extracurricular activity might be identical to what someone's doing during physical education. And we want our mask policy to cover those activities as well. So that's why that change was made. Uh, and that about covers it in terms of the draft you have, so.
So this is a first reading. We don't vote tonight. Uh, but do people have questions, comments, thoughts? Oh, Barbara.
Just looking at what David was just talking about, about the, the, when you're not required to wear masks, it says during certain outdoor activities in physical, physical education classes. The problem that I see with that is that it doesn't say what those certain activities are. So students could say, well, we're doing certain activities in physical education classes and we don't need them. And what are the certain activities where you don't need them and where you do? I, it, it just seems vague to me.
Do you have a suggestion how to deal with that? Would you like?
I don't particularly. I just, but you know, if either you where, what, when would you not wear them in physical education activities? That's, that's my question. I don't, I don't know when. I don't know when you wouldn't wear them if you're outside. I know that when you're running, it's not particularly comfortable to wear them. But are we saying that when you're running, you don't have to wear them? But I, to me, it just makes that easier. I would rather it said something like unless, unless the teacher said it was not necessary. In other words, I can't, I don't, I don't, I, when would you and when wouldn't you in physical education activities?
Jennifer?
We did talk about, I hear you, Barbara. We did talk about this a little bit, um, because we were also curious. And, and the one thing that, and someone correct me if I'm mistaken. So in physical education activities indoors, there are no exceptions to that rule indoors, but there could be outdoors. But we didn't have specific items. So perhaps we would be more comfortable with language that says, you know, teacher indicated activities or something that says that it's something that teachers direct or educators direct versus student choice. Maybe that would clarify some of that language.
Absolutely.
I also think that the extracurricular, you know, we were thinking about after-school activities like athletics or other clubs or anything like that that we may be able to offer, um, where we would want students to also be wearing masks. And so, you know, and some of that falls under MIA and other rules. Um, I, I don't know what those outdoor, uh, physical education activities would be. Um, I don't know if we want to follow up with like so in like in the curriculum department of PE, health and wellness. Uh, well, and, and see if that language needs to be in there or if we take it out or put a qualifier on it.
I would absolutely check because as it is, it's up to who's saying you can or you can't take it off. Well, this is a physical education activity and this is a certain one where I don't feel so comfortable wearing my mask and I'm going to take it off. It just seems it leaves things up to the individual person if you are doing certain physical education activities outside. And the question is, do we want that?
So I'm, I'm just gonna, I'll respond if it's okay with chair back again, or to you, Barbara. I mean, I, I don't think that, that wasn't. I'll guess I'll speak for myself. That wasn't my intention. So I think it's important that we get the wording right. And I, I would be supportive of putting, changing the language so that it's educator, something. I mean, I guess, I don't know how you word that language. The educator could indicate. I think we should get some feedback from PE, health and wellness and see if this is something they even, that we think that we want in there or if there are reasons why we would put it in there. And even if we did, I was, I guess in my mind, thinking that it might be an educator, like say, this is a time where we're socially distant and we're outdoors and here are all these other health and safety parameters. And if you are comfortable, this is a time when you could take a mask break or something like that. I, I don't know. I think we should get some follow-up from, from people who actually are teaching this and see what they think.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Are there comments at this time? So I, if there are comments, I think they can get them to you, David or Jennifer, Andy, one of the committee members.
Yes, I'll be fine. You could send it to me. The, the one concern I do have though that I want to state is some of these policies are pretty time sensitive. I think it's very important that we try to get these approved in time for the start of the school year on the sixteenth. That's why we've sort of been moving through this very quickly with a meeting on the eighth. Another meeting today, part of the full school committee meeting, a first reading today. And then we have a second reading on the fourteenth. Following the interviews of the school committee candidates to fill the vacancy. Uh, so that, that would be the goal. So I would appreciate uh, that the, the feedback should actually be sent to Robin probably, but send the feedback to Robin. And then I'll incorporate any concerns. But I do want just to keep in mind the timetable that we're looking to try to hopefully get this approved the fourteenth.
Sounds good. Jennifer?
I just wanted to clarify. So David, if, if that language could be updated with input. Can we do a second reading at the next meeting? Can we still, and we, can we then do the vote? Can we still, will this keep us making this edit? Will it, we, will it send us off track or can we still do what we wanted to do?
I think we can still do what we want to do. There have been many times where a policy gets approved subject to a particular edit. So that should be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, policy team, for doing it, doing the work. Mary Ellen, did you want to, uh, talk about this extended day or do you want to postpone it?
No, no. The, um.
I think Matt said he would help you as well.
We're a good team. The capital, um, subcommittee had some of this discussion with the extended day and having them reopen um, around, I believe around October first. Um, and so what the extended days have asked for is a, a reduction in their license amount for the year. Um, and then, um, we've coordinated some transition cleaning protocols with them so that as our students leave and transition into the extended day and rooms are some cleaning. So they will be using our cleaning products, but they will be providing some, some additional support around cleaning around the transition. So the vote of the committee would be to waive fifty percent of their current licensing fee that they pay. Um, so they would have no payment for the fall and then they would have a second pay, their second payment or only payment of the year in the spring. And whether the committee would like us to enter those license agreements and allow that. We can do that or we would just charge them the full amount. That's the other option.
This rental or license fee?
It's a license, um, because it's long-term versus a one-time or two-time rental. Uh, we don't have leases with them. If we go out to, if they want a lease, which is a multi-year, we would have to go out to bid. So we do license, one-year license.
So what kind of money are we talking about, Marion?
Um, Matt apparently has that because they're all different.
Well, I just, I just spent a ballpark.
You know, the, the average, uh, annual license for the year is around eleven, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars. So it'd be half of it. Uh, they have different rates because they have different use, different number of kids, they use different amount of space. Um, and a big reason why we offered up uh, this to them when they, you know, wanted to get back started was because they're, they're in sort of startup mode. They don't have much cash reserves or in some case, any cash reserves. So they, they need to get their business running again. And if we can uh, remove their overhead for six months or so, then, then that gives them a, a chance to recover. If they don't recover, at least we didn't charge them anything to try to uh, get back into business of providing, uh, after-school, uh, care.
So we need a motion and a vote and then a conversation, I guess. So does someone have a motion? Andy?
Oh, do I, does that mean I have to invent the wording?
Well, Marion's going to help you.
Okay, well, I move that. Go ahead.
Move that we, that we reduce the license agreements for the extended days by fifty percent for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And do we make it clear that the payment is only due later on?
And the payment is due in April.
I have a second. Okay, good move. Second, thank you, Barbara. Uh, conversation, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, saying none, we'll go for a vote. Uh, if that's okay. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah, I didn't hear it.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well. So that went through. Thank you. Uh, any new business before we go into executive session? Susan?
This isn't a new business, but it's just to finish up on the reopening conversation from the task forces. There's a lot going on, on the, on the panels and the task forces and they're doing incredible work. There are a few things that I just want to make sure are on people's radar screens because I think they're going to be coming up. Not necessarily before Monday, but, um, we're not going to have a ton of time to talk about this Monday. And I just, if there was any other direction from the committee, I wanted to make sure I got that in because we have a task force meeting uh, tomorrow at nine thirty. Um, but just quickly, there were three things. One is that there's a lot of interest in parent engagement. Um, and so panel one and some members of other panels have put together a whole series of materials. Um, a parent welcome packet, if you will. Um, there's really good stuff in there. I'm happy to send it to you. It's things like, you know, what are the tips and tools for remote learning about setting up a consistent workspace and helping your students follow a routine and planning fun movement breaks and that kind of thing. Um, there are really good infographics, um, about masks and public safety. Um, my favorite one is sort of the top ten things you missed while you were, you know, away this summer. Uh, so if you, if you have paid no attention whatsoever to our sixty hours of meeting a week, um, what are, what are the ten things you need to know? So one of the PTO presidents put that together. It's really good. So I'm happy to send this to all of you guys. I think the idea is that, um, well, two things. One is we need to send it to the principals to make sure that there's nothing in there that's different from what they're telling, um, people or their teachers are telling people, uh, both no surprises, but also, you know, really needing to make sure that they have a chance to. Uh, I'm sure they're super busy, but like just in terms of parent communication, we don't want to send something to parents like this that they haven't seen. And second, they are probably, their teachers are, I know are sending things out. I'm getting all kinds of things from teachers. And so if there are best practices that they want to be included in there, I want to give them that opportunity. So that's one piece. And if, um, folks want to see it, um, it's one of those situations where it's a little bit of P S B staff time leveraging a tremendous amount of parent time to put these materials together. And I think it's just a great, a great example. And Erin and Meg and Casey and Michelle and others have been sort of helpful in this. So I think they've, they've done a ton of work and it's great. So there are a couple of next steps on that. The second thing is, is that there are next steps, um, from panel. The second thing is, is that there are next steps from Panel 2 about, there's some wellness recommendations, some of which we've done already. They were very strong advocates for the wellness coordinator and some other things. But some of which are potentially creating a wellness kit. So what is it that we send home with all of the children to be able to do, especially Remote Learning Academy? But really, given that some of them are going to be out of school for like three months. So are we, is there something that we can do there? So I think we need, we're gonna get a recommendation on that from them. But I want to sort of get a sense of the committee as to if, if you guys want us to come back here or if we can just move it forward somehow. So there are sort of a few of those as well. There's kind of a whole page of recommendations on health and wellness and social emotional learning. There's a lot of conversation about the universal screener, we talked about this earlier. And so at some point, we, as, as Casey said, we probably need to revisit that. Just in terms of what is it that we're collecting on students and how are we supporting them? Both kind of tier one, but also when we're, when we're sending things. There's a whole set of recommendations from Panel 1 about equity issues. And we talked about this a little bit at the town school partnership this morning. But essentially, we know that our, our students and families who are low income. And it really is not just steps to success, which I think is what people normally think of. But we have low income students sort of across the spectrum. We have almost 1,000, depending on how you count. And so, and they need a variety of things. And so really understanding what those needs are, to what extent the district can fill those needs and to the extent that we can't fill those needs, either from a, you know, from a budget point of view, but also just from an appropriateness point of view, you know, how we can create, you know, creative partnerships like we've done with the food pantry in the past and others to get them what they need. Because I think there's gonna be a lot of, I think, the kinds of things that are getting talked about and the kinds of gaps or things that people on this committee would agree are not acceptable. And things that we would really want to be able to, to help with or somehow help with. So then Panel 3 has done a lot, there's probably less decisions for us on Panel 3, but Panel 3 has created a whole set of professional development for our teachers. And they've educated hundreds of, of teachers at this point, which is fantastic. And I think they're working with Michelle on sort of what those next trumps look like. But basically, one of the main ideas is like, are there a set of competencies as an educator that you need to be kind of functional in this environment? The less content and more kind of the skills to be able to, like, when do you use synchronous or asynchronous learning? How do you get good discussions going? Some really just the craft of trying to teach in this environment. Which some of which is going to be teacher to teacher and the teachers are already doing this with each other. And some of which is from, you know, people who are doing this at a state level with other districts around, just learning from them. So there's kind of a set of things around that. That one probably doesn't need to come here, I think that one can probably be handled by senior staff and the principals and the coordinators and the teachers. The last one is the health and safety ones. And I think this is the one where, just to sort of boil it all down, they've done an amazing job as we all know and have been talking about on important issues on distancing and on PTE and on protocols. Testing is sort of what's up next. And for testing, the sort of, the headline is that what seems to be kind of moving forward with the most traction is symptomatic testing, testing of symptomatic people, but not sort of the surveillance routine testing, mostly for budget issues. It's millions of dollars to try to do something like that. So we're still exploring it, we're still seeing if it's possible. But the sort of symptomatic piece seems to be, have a lot of traction as moving forward. We have a group of parents who are doing incredible work on that as well. And the superintendent and Mel Kretner, the town administrator, Tricia Leham are all sort of in the, in the driver's seat there. So I guess my sort of question is that as we think about, sorry, the one, the one other piece on, on parent communication is on Panel 4. What became clear is that there was some concern about each individual school doing its own sort of training for parents, if you will, or its own explanation of the health and safety things that were going on. And so there was sort of a request, if, you know, if we're gonna be doing a welcome back to school sort of thing, is there some way to do kind of a video that goes out to everyone in the district? That really explains a lot of the decisions that have been made and why, either for health and safety or for all of it. But then really setting up Q and As with each school building. Again, doing this in conjunction with the principals, not, you know, sort of making sure this is, kind of fits into their parent communication plan. But really making sure that people in every building have an opportunity to interact both with either Jim or senior staff or, you know, panel members or someone who is kind of looking at this from a district wide perspective in addition to the principal's perspective, just so that they kind of get, that we, we're clear on what things are consistent district wide, especially about health and safety, but maybe some of the curriculum things too, now that I'm reflecting on tonight. And, and then the principal's gonna say, this is how it's gonna work here in our building. So the good news is that, again, we have parents who are excited to do all of these things. So there's also a website, you know, redesign, some of them are all excited about redesigning the parent engagement website and create little mini videos for parents, the kind of parent to parent. So again, I think it's one of these things where a little bit of staff time and a little bit, so these, you know, like a little bit of engagement, making sure that they're not doing anything that's like totally wrong or off base. It's gonna be really helpful on sort of a number of these dimensions. So I wanted to make sure people knew the scope of things from equity to the, to the parent packet, to the Panel 2, social emotional wellness recommendations. The health and safety ones, I think you're, you've spent a lot of time on, but also just the, the piece there about communication and the district wide town halls or the building by building town halls. And then for Panel, the Panel 3, again, there's not much there for us to engage on. The professional development is really being run through the district staff. But I wanted people to know those things, just in case there was any ideas that you have. I don't expect anybody to be coming to another 15 hours a week of meetings with us, although you're welcome to. Jim is laughing. So if people have thoughts on it, I'm happy to bring it back. But I think all of it is very much consistent with the reopening plans that everyone's been developing. And Meg has been sending out incredible emails to the Remote Learning Academy parents that are leveraging some of these panel materials. She's getting great feedback, lots of warm fuzzy feedback. And so I think people are excited about these and the, and the amount of parent work that's going in to really doing things that are very leveraged, very useful, not make work. And, and so anyway, let me stop there, but I'm open to any ideas. But then specifically, if there are things that you want to be involved in, feel free to let me know and we'll, we'll plug you into the right place. And Andy and Mariah might have other things, but those are the ones that are, Jim actually, but those are the ones that are top of mind for me.
Thank you so much, Susan, for all you're doing. And also just a reminder to us and to the community at large, those meetings are posted on the Brookline.gov calendar. So people are welcome to attend to see for themselves what the work is that's been going on. So thank you, it's been incredible work, an incredible amount of work and such experts for sure. Mariah?
I just wanted to add that we have started some of the public information videos. Dave Gashock and Jim Marini were interviewed last week. And this week, I believe it came out this afternoon, so we should see it soon, was Meg and, Meg Messini and Tricia Leham were both interviewed for this week. And so hopefully that will be something that, again, we can, those, the last week's video has already been seen hundreds of times by the community. And hopefully we'll continue to have a lot of interest in those. And, and so that ties into the parent information strategy that, that Susan was talking about, that Meg has been spearheading from the staff side.
Yeah, especially since we don't want to do the same thing. We, senior staff time, superintendent time are so precious right now. We do not want to spend time telling the exact same message when it could be a 20 minute video and that goes out to absolutely everybody, there's no confusion about what the message is. And, you know, the superintendent often goes school to school in the fall, since we're not going to school to school at this point. And as a time to communicate, a 20 minute video could sort of knock out a bunch and then just do kind of one hour Q and As that are, that are, it's the best of synchronous and asynchronous learning if we kind of apply it to ourselves. So anyway, all those things are kind of in the, in the hopper.
Jennifer, did you want to say, oh, Meg, and then I'll get to Jennifer, Meg?
I just wanted to say that I just think in, especially coming back to school and all the stress families are under and children are under and our community's been under, this is such a wonderful way of community coming together to offer their gifts, their concern. And we're just doing, I mean, it's been such a pleasure working with Panel 1, working with Susan, working with Mariah, you know, just everybody to, to come together around positive messages and supporting our community. So I just want to say thank you because it's given me a lens and a way to connect in ways that I haven't been able to connect. So thank you for the opportunity as well.
Jennifer, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm so glad that Meg went because I lost my thought for a second, I had to get it back. So I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you to, again, as several people have already done to all of our expert panels. I was able to go to some towards the, the middle and end of the summer. And, and then I was sort of getting my stride and hitting them all and now I'm back at work. So I frequently am not able to attend, but the meetings I was able to attend are just an amazing amount, a wealth of information and passionate people who are really supporting, you know, the, the work that we all want to do. And so I just want to really say thank you, it's been such a great experience. And I had a specific question, which was can we post or link, maybe a better way to do it, these videos that are happening through, through Big and these interviews on like our back to school website or our reopening website as part of this parent communication strategy? If it's not already been done, can we, can we do that to just add it to the wealth?
I think that's the plan, Meg's been talking about a parent portal that's being set up and then it would all be there for people to see. Correct me if I'm wrong, Meg, but I think that's the plan, right? You're on mute.
Thanks. I think that that is great. And I've been talking with Erin and Casey about that. And I know that, you know, we're just trying to figure out right now kind of what, how to, how to set that up. But I think that, you know, it's been loud and clear and Barbara raised this a couple of months ago that our materials need to be more accessible to parents and, and more consistent across schools so that we have, you know, we have a district message and all of that. So it's, it's on our list.
About that because I think one of the other ideas was like infographics. And again, we've got panel members putting together one page infographics. I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about this and having ideas, you've spent capital in your mind, Erin, of the things you'd like to be able to do with a website, given unlimited time and resources. And it's great that we have these, is there anything you want to add just on the, on the communication front?
Um, no, I don't think so. I mean, as Meg said, we're kind of in, still in the beginning phases of kind of talking about it and thinking it through. There's a lot going on as everyone has mentioned. And so we're sort of focusing on having a successful reopening of schools starting next Wednesday. And I, I just like to be totally transparent, like have looked at the resources, but haven't had the time to necessarily like think through them and see whether or not they fit with our messaging. And, but yes, we want to post them. The other thing is, I guess, when these things are happening, like the, the interview with Dr. Marini and Meg and Tricia, I didn't actually know about them. So if someone could make sure that I know about them too, so then we can get them either posted or we can kind of blast that out to our community too. Then I think that'll be helpful as well. So making sure we're just like all connected.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, everybody. Thank you for all that works for the panels. We're gonna move on to our executive session.
Wait, Suzanne, I still have something to, under the old and new business.
Okay, Mariah.
Thanks, because we got to ask questions of all the presentations earlier, but Jim gave some updates in his superintendent's update at the beginning that we didn't get to actually respond to. So I just, okay. So I have a couple of questions. One is just to confirm, totally appreciating what you said, Jim, about the timeline and, and pushing that out. But so is the plan then, I think our next meeting after the 16th, that isn't, that is a true school committee meeting is the 24th? So is the plan for maybe the 24th to present the timeline?
That would be my goal, yes.
Okay. And then when you talked about the plus time, you said once a week. And I was wondering, because we talked last time about sort of the floor of what plus would be? Is it once a week for an hour, two hours, four hours? Is there any sort of floor beyond once a week established?
Erin, you spoke with the principals, did they mention any more about that?
Sorry, Mariah, can you answer a question one more time?
Sure. The floor, sort of the floor for what plus might include, Jim mentioned in his opening remarks, once a week. But is there sort of a time amount, like an hour, two hours? What is the floor for that per week?
Yeah, so I didn't really get a sense of, you know, minutes or hours necessarily. I think, again, principals are still trying to figure out their schedules for what I'll call instructional time and determining how to fit those pieces of the plus time in with that. I think it's, again, something that we're just still figuring out and might have a little bit more information on once schedules are completed.
Yeah, so it's probably fair to say that the principals expressed a commitment to using the outside space. They just didn't have the, they didn't have the program sort of planned out. And they, and they, they want to know the dimensions of the tent, so how many kids they're gonna put in all of that. Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
More the commitment than it is the specifics.
Okay, then my next question is on the priority, like a blanket priority for materials fee. And we had never talked about that, it was presented. And, and I sort of thought at one point we'd be actually be able to, to sort of discuss that and maybe vote on it because it was talking about whole new cohorts of students to bring in. And I've heard a lot, and I agree with the sentiment, and I've heard this a lot in the community, that, that prioritization of the teachers who are materials, whose students are materials fee makes sense. But for a lot of the town workers who even live in town, those town workers are now not able to send their kids to school, but their colleagues who are not living in town are able to send their kids to school. And so it feels like there's a very inequitable approach to treating students of town employees. And so I guess I, and if it were me, I would say like, you know, I'm not sure for many of these people who might be office workers, you know, why the students should be prioritized when it means that our own students who live in town, there might be a more of a significant delay there. So, does that make sense? I'm really tired.
Yeah, that's okay. When you say town employees, are you talking municipal town employees?
Right, because materials fee isn't just teaching students of teachers, it's students of anyone who works for the town.
I, I. So, so not certain how to answer that, that inquiry, except to maybe have to take it back and look because we were looking at school department employees, I believe. And looking at the, yeah, we're looking at, the, the school department employees is where we were looking. We did not expand that to the municipal employees, we did not, we did not do that.
Okay, so it's only students of teachers, it's not all materials fee students who are invited back? Because the documentation just says materials fee.
So Mariah, I think maybe it's two things. One is it is, yes, all materials fees students. The other piece that we added to is PSB students who are children of PSB staff who are residents.
Right, but what about town staff? I, I work in the DPW and my colleague works in the DPW and they don't live in town, but they send their kids to Brookline Schools. Their school now gets included in this first to return, their student gets returned, included in the first to return program. But my student, because I live in town, is not included under this current policy.
Oh, 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 oh.
Does that make sense now?
It, it makes sense to me because what you're saying is we crossed over on the materials fee, but we didn't cross over on the residents.
Exactly.
Well, that's an interesting comment, Mariah. I think you have to look at that, thank you.
I think there's just, yeah, a lot of the employees on the town side rightfully are feeling this discrepancy. They are very devoted to the town and are feeling this conflict. And I think it's, and I also, I hear that, but I also hear the side where materials fee students, you know, are they coming back in advance of the Brookline students? And it's gonna slow down our timeline that we haven't heard yet because we have students in the building. So it's just something to think about. And then I have a question, last meeting, I think there was a plan presented to hire up to 12 additional K teachers plus paras. Have, have additional K sections come on board and where does that stand?
Yeah, we, we do have additional K sections, I believe we have four. Mary Ellen can correct me on that, we have four K teachers. The remainder of new hires will be filled where they are needed. And the need is probably gonna be the Remote Learning Academy is where it's gonna, Meg's killing herself to get it staffed. And we are going to have a need for some additional. Mary Ellen, working with, again, with the municipal side, really has done a terrific job in being able to get some assurances of having funding that will support the additional staff at this point that we need in order to run the school. So. So there were four additional K teachers that were hired. We're doing a lot of, and really trying very hard to reassign existing staff in the building, specifically if there is some, so let me just give you the bigger picture. If out of, let me call the K eight schools brick and mortar, just so we'll separate those from remote, is that okay? So the brick and mortar of the K eights, even the K 12, if you went K 12, there are a significant number, I think, as many as 1,400 to 1,500 students who are not going to be in the brick and mortar. A number of them of that, around 700 are non-returning students, and those are international students and students who are just not returning to the public schools. Now we have about 750 students who are not in the brick and mortar, but they are over in the Remote Learning Academy. The point is that we have a number of literacy specialists and math specialists, but we have a reduced number of students. And so I have asked the principals that where they can, in, in addition to consolidating classes, when, if class sizes were sort of unreasonably low, to consolidate classes where they can, and to reassign staff where it works. So for example, in one particular school, there is a, I believe it's probably a literacy specialist who has a background teaching kindergarten and, and wanted to teach kindergarten, and there was an opening for a kindergarten, so that, that person just shifts the assignment. So that's not an additional hire, I'm saying, and then because the, the, the workload that that person would have, can, the workload can be shifted around, freeing up that person to pick up the kindergarten. So we're trying to be efficient and, and make certain that the, the other staff that are picking up, being assigned to classes, have the license for it and have the desire for it. And so far, I mean, my God, the principals have been wonderful, so far they've been able to move a number of staff around to pick up those classes. So we're trying desperately to not have to hire from outside any more teachers than is absolutely necessary. Mel's been terrific.
Oh, sorry, I just, so just to follow on, and I know everyone's tired, just the, so the number of sections you hired for more kindergarten, but is there an, more than four additional kindergarten sections then? I guess I'm trying to really figure out how many additional kindergarten sections there are, because a lot of people have been asking about that, and it's out in the community, and that's what I think.
Four, and I would say as of today, there were five, I don't know of any more.
Five additional kindergarten sections.
I, well, additional to the, to the budget, yeah. Because we had to hire, we had to hire four, because the class sizes had to be lowered, given the six-foot distance.
Right.
And, and that, and that happened today with one school, as I just described. So there would be, using the definition of from last year to this year, yeah, there's five additional kindergarten teachers.
Okay, and then I have one last question. The last time we met, there was the question about, for example, when, when students go into in-person, as they are in K or in hybrid, and the question about how they access their education when they're in quarantine and isolation?
Yeah.
And was, is there an answer for that now?
I don't have an answer for that yet. Have worries about it, but don't have an answer for that yet. But that has not gone off the radar, that has not gone off the radar. That's, I think that's actually another thing we need, we need to get to, because somebody who's home quarantined, who may be perfectly able to engage in education, ought to have the opportunity to do that. So we definitely have to figure that out, and Meg's going to help us figure that out.
I will say that this week, my, one of my kids got a fever.
Yeah.
And it meant that my other kid couldn't go to school. And so I'm already, like, this already happened, school hasn't started. I have one in daycare, so an older kid had fever, daycare kid was home. So, and, and luckily the fever went away, but if it hadn't abated, like, so it's, it's here, it's real, it really needs to be addressed.
Not a future problem, it's, it's a now problem.
Yeah.
Soon to be a super now problem. David may have a question.
David, did you want to say something?
Yes, just wanted to dovetail off of one of Mariah's questions around the structured outdoor time and the floor of a 30 minutes. I'm wondering whether we have scheduled yet for all grades, an opportunity for students to meet each other, meet their instructor and their teacher in person? Has that part been arranged or in process?
It's probably in process. I don't think that that has been arranged yet, unless somebody else has other information. I would say that has not been arranged, because the, the, the principals are just too focused on opening, to have arranged that. That, they, they all spoke to that, though, and they all spoke to, that's, that's something that they certainly are planning to do, but they just don't have that planned just yet. Would you say, Erin, you, again, met with the principals?
Yeah, I would say that's correct. I mean, some of them already have their materials distribution scheduled, and whether or not school-based staff, teachers will be there for that, I think is still to be determined. But there's that opportunity when it arises, and then the principals, all of them said that, you know, meet and greets are on their list of what they want to be able to do with, with their students. It's just, again, what we talked about earlier.
And, and I know that parents really want that. I would want it too, but, you know, tolerance's message keeps ringing in my head in terms of, you know, not to delay, because we shouldn't be delaying, but to have a little tolerance for when, when school actually starts to move on that piece, when people can say, okay, now let's go, let's do the meet and greet. I, I just think in order of priority, top priorities, open the school, second priority probably is going to be, let's get the meet and greets, let's get the kids, and, and the tents haven't arrived quite yet, but maybe that's just a euphemism, maybe you don't need the tents to actually go outside, but, you know, it's, it could be just a symbol, but, yeah. So the, 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 the short answer is no, it's not planned. The long answer is it's on everybody's radar, and there's, they are committed to doing it. So I got to stick my own neck out here a little bit. On the 24th, we, we hopefully will have more clarity around that, as well as, the first piece of clarity is what are you going to do with kids who have, who are home, being quarantined, who actually can work and need to have, we need to figure out exactly what that means, how, how, how we would accommodate that. That's a puzzle we will need to unravel a little bit. That's the best I can do right now, I think.
Okay, it's getting late, but we still have a need for executive session. So I'm going to move the motion. Before I do that, I just want to publicly thank Matt Gillis. Thank you, Matt. I don't know if you've said thank you for all that you did to these last couple of days to get those stickers on and listen to all the, the concerns about bathroom fans and room ventilation, so thank you for that. I know it's a huge effort, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. I move to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purpose. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, B E U, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, I so declare. Do I have a motion for that? I moved, I have a second. Thank you, Andy, Jennifer, let's do a roll call. And Susan?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we will not be coming back to open session, and I will see you all.